This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
Very good. Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board Meeting of June 16th, 2021, and welcome back to an in-person meeting. My name is Jack Jumpsick and as the Chair of the Amherst Planning Board, I'm calling the meeting to order at, what, 6:33 PM? This meeting is being recorded and minutes are being taken. Opportunity for public comment will be provided during the general public comment period and is reserved for comments regarding items that are not on tonight's agenda. Residents can express their views for up to three minutes and at the discretion of the planning board chair, please be aware the board will not respond to comments during the general public comment period. Public comment may also be heard at other appropriate times during the meeting. So getting to our agenda, we have no minutes to review and we can begin with public comment period if anyone wishes to speak. Oh, one hand? Okay. So please come up to the chair and state your name and address. And your mic, you might have to press the mic, I'm not sure. Down to the base. Yeah, do you see the green light? Okay, so get the mic close to your face. Very good.
Oh, it's a green light, it wasn't on.
There you go, alright.
Hi, I'm Susannah Musfrat, 38 North Prospect Street. And I just wanted to say a word about the two blocks of the BL District along North Pleasant Street between Coles Lane and McClellan. I have commented at meetings, I have written to you several times. I have not received any feedback, any acknowledgement even. And just in case my message missed you, I want to say it again on the record. I think it's really important that the town make an effort to save the historic buildings in those two blocks. And at least develop two options. One, the direction the planning department seemed to be going the last time this came onto the agenda. But the other, to take a hard look at what could be accomplished in those blocks while retaining the historic buildings and perhaps loosening some of the requirements for the lots behind the historic buildings. That way, the council would have a comparative presentation and could weigh the importance of preserving the historic buildings. If they only see one option, they don't really have a very good chance to do that. So I beg you, please, to do that. Explore two different ways to treat those two blocks. The other BL District downtown is a different kettle of fish and I don't think the two should be lumped together.
So which two blocks are you...
Between Coles Lane and McClellan on the west side of North Pleasant Street. And if you need me to resend any of the many communications I've sent, I'll be happy to do that. But they are, I think, on the town website.
Yeah, Chris, please.
I just wanted to note that we have forwarded to you all the information that we've received from Ms. Musfrat and I think Pam Rooney has sent a similar email.
Yeah, Pam and I work together on a lot of the...
So you have received all of that information and it's essentially encouraging you to preserve the buildings that include the Henion Bakery and the Florist and Bruegger's Bakery and the building that used to house, oh gosh, it was a lovely restaurant, Shale Bear, yeah. So that's what it's about in case you wanted to look in your emails and see them.
I've talked to lots of people in town who are really feel strongly about this issue, so it's not, I'm not speaking for myself alone. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Any other public comment, please? State your name and address, please.
Hi, Pam Rooney, 42 Cottage Street. It's really a pleasure to see all of you. I don't recognize Mr. Jumpsick without the sunflowers, but... It's really nice to see people in person. That said, I know you, none of you have the authority or jurisdiction to do anything about the public meetings and the continuation of Zoom. Ms. Brestrop did chat with me a little bit about that. I would just ask for the record that any effort to maintain some Zoom capability would be greatly welcomed by lots of people who have expressed interest in not being able to drive at night as people age or people who have kids and not have to leave their house to be able to participate. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other, please come up to the chair, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Ira Brick, 255 Strong Street. Good to see you. It's exciting to be here live, but I also want to say that when I think, when I was young and they said, "What good is the space program?", supposedly we got tang from the space program. One takeaway, I think Zoom is a great takeaway from COVID. Public participation is good for the town and clearly you can see the effect of needing to come live. There's nothing, there's no reason why you would not want more people expressing themselves to you. I also just want to say, not about tonight's specific topic, but in general, I would just urge you to figure out where you want us to be and not waiver from that. And by not waiver from that, I mean not give waivers that take us off of that path. If we want to be in a place where there are houses that families can afford to buy, don't allow them to be turned into duplexes with accessory dwelling units. There's a place for that, but the phenomenon seems to work to the advantage of people who are the infamous student landlords that have the problem houses. It is not your obligation to give waivers when they take us off of our path. And I would just urge you to make a destination which is affordable housing, all the things that all these public participants have been urging, stick with it. And somebody made the point to me today, which I agree with, that affordable housing is about families being able to afford a house, not about a student being able to afford $1,000 for a bed. So let's just think about that the marketplace for any given house is an available house for a family, an available house for a student. We need to solve both of those problems. But if the bias is to give waivers, then that bias is going to lead to more problem houses and fewer family houses. So I would urge you to just make a plan, you're the planning board, and stick with it and don't waiver. Thank you.
Thank you, Ira. Any other public comments? Raise your hand. I see none. Okay. So first item of our meeting is the review and recommendation to the zoning board of appeals on the subject of ZBA FY2021-17, College Street, 1957 LLC, 187 College Street. And they are requesting a special permit in order to allow a change of use from a one-family detached dwelling to a non-owner occupied duplex dwelling, extension and alteration of the lot coverage and building area on pre-existing, on a pre-existing non-conforming lot, modification of the required lot area family under Dimension Regulations Footnote A and Sections 3.211, 9.22, and 10.38 of the zoning bylaw. And again, this is at 187 College Street, map 14B, parcel 169, and it's in the general residence RG zoning district. Any, well, this is, we're just recommending here, I don't, board disclosures, but I'll go ahead and ask. I see none. Okay. So would, who is representing the client? Just state your name and...
Good evening. My name is Alan St. Hilaire with Valley Property Management, here to present to you the plan that we presented to the zoning board at our first meeting that I think does a pretty good job of explaining the project that's proposed. I'd like to start reviewing the neighborhood and then move into reviewing the architectural plans for the proposed structure. And then I'll turn it over to Mike Lou from Berkshire Design who will review the site plan with you. So a big part of the section of the bylaw that would allow this project states that the proposed project is no more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing use and the existing uses, neighboring uses. So just wanted to kind of give a review of the area. The block between Railroad Street and South Whitney Street is the only small little block of residential properties. To the west, you have Amherst College Physical Plant, Leader Lumber, and then all of Amherst College Campus. To the east, you have, starting two doors down from the subject, Fort Hill Autobody and Enterprise Rent-A-Car. And that runs all the way down to Southeast Street. And it's all commercial use from there, restaurants, coffee shops, another restaurant, a tire shop. So it's just this little collection of residences that are in the immediate butter zone that are in question. And I prepared a little grid to show you what the uses are currently and the lot sizes. So 165, 167 College Street is a non-owner occupied duplex, 24,000 square feet. That is the biggest lot on the street. 174 College Street, non-owner occupied, four-unit rental, 18,500. The four that are in yellow are almost to the square foot of the subject property, non-owner occupied duplexes presently. 180 and 181 College are non-owner occupied, single families on the same lot size as is 195 College to the east. And 197 A and B College on slightly larger lot size duplex. 204 College, single family, that's on the corner of South Whitney, that's the last residential property to the east. And this, the little Rs and Cs just show that they're, they're all rentals. There are no, per the assessor's records, there are no owner occupied properties on this entire stretch of road including the subject, which is currently a non-owner occupied, single-family rental. So that is essentially the neighborhood, if you want to call it that. Route 9 is, as everyone likely knows, is an extremely busy road, tens of thousands of cars a day pass by there. The next thing I'll jump into is the, show you some exterior photos of the subject, just so you have some familiarity. This is the view from the east. It's kind of a two-step story and a half in the front, single story in the rear. And the proposed addition would go to the southerly side of the structure, further away from the street, further out of view. It would attach butt up against this rear wall of the structure. This is a view from the existing parking area. This is a view directly from the south with College Street off in the background here, left to right. Another view from the southwest, due west, and coming around to the front of the house. This is the view with College Street from behind you. The next thing that I'll present is the architectural plans for what we propose to construct. And just based on seeing the photos that you saw, you might recognize this section here is the existing building and this is the proposed addition. This is a view from the east. This is a view from the west. So this facade would be facing the parking area. This facade faces west, up the hill towards Amherst College. This is the existing, let me see if I can zoom in on this a little bit for you. North elevation view, the existing structure is here with the side porch and the proposed addition behind it. And this is the view from the rear of the property, that the, this is the proposed structure and the existing structure kind of pokes out to the west a little bit. Floor plans, if anyone's curious, the existing house. This is the first floor, so it's comprised of one bedroom, living, dining, hallway, kitchen, two bathrooms. That is the existing section of the first floor. Below that is the proposed addition, similar floor plan, living, dining, kitchen, bathroom, one bedroom. And on the second floor, in the existing structure, which is this section of the footprint here, there are three bedrooms. This goes down the stairs to that front hallway you saw. This is just attic, uninhabitable attic over the first floor of the kitchen area. And three bedrooms, two bathrooms on the second floor. Basement will be unfinished, the existing basement is unfinished, there's mechanicals and laundry down there. Proposed basement will be unfinished with mechanicals. The laundry are actually on the first floor, so it's just going to be an unfinished basement. The, we have some supplemental information here that I can review to give you an idea of some of the neighboring properties. All we saw was the GIS, but this has some actual photos of them. Of course, that's the subject property. There we go. So the neighborhood compatibility question, this is 175 College, which is a duplex and it has a very, very similar architecture to the proposed structure, the existing house with a single family in the back and an addition to the rear of that. This is that four-unit building up near Leader Lumber, 174 College. 200 College, again, is a very, very similar structure to what we're proposing. And then, of course, for reference, two doors down is the commercial use of the rental car and autobody. And three doors up is the lumberyard. So I believe under the Section 9.22 of the bylaw, there is, the zoning board has the authority to grant an expansion of an existing non-conforming use as long as it's not any more detrimental to the neighborhood. We feel that it is not, that it fits in in kind with the neighborhood, both in size, scale, and usage, and lot size. The project is proposed for, assuming we get permitting next year, construction next year. One of the concerns that the Conservation Commission had was how long would that construction take? We've done similar projects and they're about a three to four month timeline, so it's very quick. Happens over the summertime, minimal disruption visually to neighbors and passersby. Sure. So Chris asked that we discuss a little bit of the existing non-conforming use. So the lot size is non-conforming even for a single family presently, frontage area. And the circle is a minimum circle size that doesn't fit on the property. So those are the existing non-conformities. The, when Mike reviews the site plan, you'll see that the lot coverage we tried to keep, we were very, very careful to keep as close as possible to the existing lot coverage. We rearranged some of the permeable surfaces and non-pervable surfaces to be very similar to what is there now. So while there is a very, very slight expansion on the lot coverage, that is the only expansion of a non-conformity on the site. And the rest of it, I think, is related things. So unless there's questions, I'll turn it over to Mike with Berkshire Design to discuss the site itself.
When you showed all the, the non-owner occupied properties, is that kind of verified through rental permits filed with the town?
Rental permits and Amherst tax assessor's records.
Okay. Now, do you know if the, are they students for the most part through there or is a mix?
I think it's a mix. You know, we manage a couple of houses along that road. It does seem to be predominantly students, but I, it's just kind of a heuristic. I don't have hard data to back that up.
Okay. So any questions from the board?
Can you talk a little bit more about the impermeable surfaces, like how much of a change is it?
That's something that I would like to turn over to Mike. I think, you know, he can probably do a better job of discussing that, the surveys, the layout, and all of that, so be happy to, but that's kind of phased you.
I have a question that's probably for...
I have a question that's probably more better suited for Chris than the planning staff. And that is, the units that are, or the houses that are duplexes in that neighborhood, are they, were they ever given waivers to become duplexes? Or was it just a pre-existing non-conforming use whenever the zoning requirement came into effect?
Chris?
I know that at least one of them is, received a special permit. Whether it received any waivers, I'm not sure, but I think it's the easternmost house going, yeah, it's probably closest to Fort River Autobody or Fort Hill Autobody.
Yeah, Enterprise.
So that one did receive a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. I'm not really aware of the other ones, but Rob Morris is here and he may be able to answer that question.
Thank you.
I can add to that. There is a duplex to the west, two doors to the west. I think I have that number in here somewhere, but that was also a special permit to go from a single family to a two-family. I think it was done in phases whereby it was converted to the duplex when it was owner occupied and then they came back to seek permission to be non-owner occupied. It is now non-owner occupied.
Thank you. Janet?
I think the four, the four unit one predates the zoning requirement. It's start, it's been a four unit since like 19, since the 1960s and they're single bedrooms.
Good. Any other questions for Alan? I see none. And Mike, you, you're going to give a supplemental?
Yeah.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so I will talk about the site plan and layout. Just, this first sheet is a survey that our office prepared for the site, but with Route 9 or College Street up here, this is the existing house. There, there is, well, there was a garage back here, the structure has been taken down, but the foundation remains and that would be removed. This kind of dash line here and here indicates, well, from the curb cut on Route 9 or College Street, this kind of gravel area that comes out down through the site and a butt's up to the front or north side of the garage and the east side of the garage here. So parking's kind of haphazard. You know, people kind of park in front of the garage in both directions, facing the garage and perpendicular at times and then obviously they park here, they park here to the side of the garage. We had the wetlands flagged, whoops, which also exist to the south of the site, on the Amherst College land, there's a, there's a ditch or a swale, a drainage swale back here. I think, I can't remember the name, it's like informally called, I think something, it's, it's got a name, you know, like the stream name or something, but I can't quite remember what that is. And do you, do you know what, okay. I've heard it before, but it didn't stick in my head. I'm sorry. The 100-foot buffer to the wetlands is here, this line that crosses the southern portion of the site and encompasses the garage structure. That's just the demolition plan, but you know, the proposal is obviously to demolish the garage, remove that, the foundation, and then remove or redo the gravel parking in a new configuration. Currently, I should say that the site has additional non-conformities in that we mentioned that the frontage is less than 100 feet, that's prescribed by zoning. The side setback here on the west side is less than the 10 feet. I think it's 8.4, 8.6 feet setback to that building facade. And then the coverage, the maximum site coverage allowed is 40%, but we are currently at 41.4%. And in a couple of iterations of this plan, we had gotten the coverage down to 40%, but in work and presenting and taking some comments from the zoning board, the coverage is actually back up to 41.5%. Now flip to the site plan and kind of explain how that happened. This is the layout plan. So again, here, just orientation, Route 9 is now over here on the right side. The existing building is here and then the shaded rectangle is the addition. Bless you. The, you can see the faint outline here, this shows where the former garage building was. And then this is the rearranged parking. You can see that it, you know, almost, you can tell that it takes up a smaller space than what used to be there. The gravel extended down here to the, to the southern edge of the garage formerly, so that's being turned all back into lawn, the green space, which is obviously very favorable in the eyes of the Conservation Commission also, being in the buffer zone. But the proposal is that there's four units or four bedrooms in the existing house and then four bedrooms in the addition. We have a total of eight parking spaces proposed. And then getting back to the coverage issue, what we had done before was we made a, we made an effort to reduce the coverage. And part of that was removing the front walk that went out basically to Route 9. It, it really doesn't serve any purpose. But with some discussions with zoning, it was, the questions came up, you know, how, how would, how would the fire department approach the building without that walk? How would the mailman deliver mail without that walk? And in reality, the fire truck would park on College Street in this stretch of the road. There's just, you know, there isn't a real way for fire trucks to access driveways and stuff, you know, on these smaller lots. So in reality, they'd probably stage on the road or whatever and just basically come in on the driveway, if you will. Similarly with the mailman, we don't really know, but there are reports that the mailman, you know, parks his truck somewhere on the road, gets out and delivers to the multiple houses and basically just walks across the front yards. I don't know what they do in the winter, they probably, you know, maybe they stop in front of the house and then walk in, but... and then walk in, but in an effort to allow or to maintain access, whatever there was, we kept this walk that went out to Route 9, and that brought the coverage back up to the 41.5. But it's so darned close to the 41.4, and then, you know, the, the zoning board has the authority to grant approval for slight increase in non-conformity if it, you know, if it is, if it matches what's going on in the neighborhood, it's not detrimental to, you know, the character of the neighborhood. And again, I guess the contention is that, you know, given the, the character of the neighborhood and the use is there, this is not going to create a nuisance or be detrimental to any of the other uses, you know, that are nearby to this property. So basically, just to complete kind of like the site plan, we have the eight parking spaces. This is supposed to be gravel. There's a walkway in front of the parking spaces, or parking lot here, separated or, or, you know, separated from the parking with the, the parking bumpers, the wheel stops. There's a walk that comes back up to this existing paved piece of walkway that serves the existing house. And then there's a, you know, the walk connects to a couple steps up to a landing at the addition. This is the trash recyclable area for bins. We're proposing to have a small, four-foot fence, screen fence around three sides of it. And then we're also proposing a six-foot stockade fence here. It's, it's hard to see, but basically in front of these, to the side of the parking spaces to screen that from the adjacent use. And I should note that if we go back and look at an aerial photo or whatever, I mean, they're, they're basically, you know, here you can see the driveway to the adjacent use, so their parking area is very close in proximity. And this is, this is not much of a change from the existing condition in that where the gravel came down and, and swept over here to the garage. But we are proposing a, a fence here to help screen and buffer, you know, the cars from the adjoining property. The, I'm going to go on to the grade plan. We did go to Conservation before COVID happened and got a negative determination on this project. Conservation was concerned about runoff, traveling toward the wetland. Not much is really changing. The, the site basically slopes from north to south, so runoff is going to accumulate and, and travel toward the wetland. But if, you know, there's a significant distance that runoff would travel before it got to the wetland. However, we agreed to provide a, an infiltration swale here planted with native shrubs to provide a buffer for, to, you know, help keep people from, you know, kind of wandering off-site and, and, you know, impacting the wetlands and off-site. They should be staying on the property anyway. So that'll define that southern edge of the property. And as I mentioned, this whole back area would remain or be turned into lawn space for the residents to use. The, the green space up here in the front yard would basically remain unchanged except for some evergreen shrubs here to help screen the parking from Route 9 as well. That's, I guess that's basically the site plan. Do you want to see the lighting plan also?
Yeah, it's in our packet. You might as well go over it quickly.
Just to flip to that real quick. So this lighting plan was prepared. These are templates that we copied from the manufacturer, but these are basically wall packs that are mounted on the building. I think there's a image of them in your, in your submission package. So they're pretty small, unobtrusive units, lighting fixtures that are mounted to the walls. It provides lighting out to the, you know, the parking spaces here in the parking lot. There's an additional fixture here that would have a screen, shield put on it so that it basically keeps light from trespassing or casting light to the west, potentially off-site onto the adjoining property. It's just meant to basically provide that light for the porch and the backyard area. So these are very kind of low-level LED lights that, you know, are totally enclosed, except for the lens at the bottom, so all the lights cast downward.
The only other thing that I'll add, Mike brought up, the side setback being non-conforming. We configured the architectural footprint so that that does not continue. Notice that we've offset the addition to the east to at least the 10-foot setback. I think it's something closer to 12. So we were cognizant of not increasing that non-conformity for...
Good.
Questions?
Yeah, I have just a couple quick, and then we can open it up. But what's your current coverage now? And, and does that include the garage?
Yes, it includes basically, yeah, the rule of the garage, the reconfiguration of all that, the gravel parking and driveway, but it's on...
It's 41 point something?
Yeah, in current conditions, it was 41.4%. So that was over the 40% maximum. At, according to this plan, it's a 41.5% coverage.
Okay.
So it's a 10th of a percent difference of an increase.
I just wanted to add that the zoning board seemed to, the concerns of the access for letter carriers and emergency personnel seem to be higher on the priority list than a fraction of additional coverage. As Mike mentioned earlier, it's just that front walkway. If we eliminated it, it would be at least the same, if not slightly less. It seemed like the zoning board's position was that that walkway is, is certainly helpful, but the fraction of increase wasn't, didn't seem to be a concern.
So just two more questions. Chris, is the nature of the 40% coverage, is that more aesthetic? Is it more for stormwater purposes, or is it just kind of historical in nature? How, 40%?
I think it's both. It's for the RG zoning district, and coverage varies throughout town.
Yeah.
For instance, in the downtown area, you're allowed to go to 95% coverage, and in other places, you're allowed to go to 70% coverage. So in this particular zoning district, you're limited to 40% coverage. And I think it's both aesthetic and for purposes of, you know, stormwater penetration.
And last question is, you have basements, you've got a wetland near there. I'm wondering about, you know, does the, do the basements, do they need a sump, control groundwater?
The existing...
Well, I'm just saying that it, what, what do you know about that? And will there be discharges from that?
I've seen the existing structure of managed the property for six years now, and we have not had any standing water in the basement. It does tend to be a relatively dry basement. There's quite a bit of elevation change from the existing house back to the drainage swale of Mike described. So it doesn't, I've never seen ponding in the backyard. I've never seen standing water. There are some properties we have, with some pump eyes, you've got 10 inches of water over the concrete side. I haven't seen that at this property. So the, the static groundwater level does seem to be below, the lowest point of the foundation present. We do, yeah. So we have two properties to the east that we also manage. We haven't, I haven't seen any water issues in those basements either.
Good. Other questions from the board? Janet, and then Doug, and then Andrew?
Well, I just thought I'd make a comment that at least the plans that are in my packet do not include the front sidewalk.
Right. These are the revised plans that we intend in response to the zoning board's comments. So we're actually showing you the kind of like the latest plans that we have, and they are different than what you had received. That was the original submission to the zoning board. And I believe that the coverage was the, was it 40.8?
Forty point eight.
Forty point eight?
Yeah.
So it went up by, you know, point seven, that, you know, adding, adding that front walk back in.
Good. Jan, do you have anything else? Okay, Janet?
So can you point out the 100-foot buffer zone again on this?
It's right here. See that line that goes through the back part, portion of the addition? Whoops.
Just zoom in on...
Okay.
Would you help?
Right here, you can see that labeled 100-foot wetland buffer.
So the, there's a, so the building itself is in the buffer zone, and perhaps just a little bit of the...
Just, just the, basically the turnaround, for the backup turnaround, part of the driveway is, is within the 100-foot buffer. But we're taking out, obviously, this, the garage, which was...
Also in the buffer zone.
Significantly in the buffer. And then the gravel came here to the back corner of the garage previously.
So a question I have is about the number of parking spaces. I was a little taken aback about the, about the, the need for parking, because I think it's usually two, two parking spaces per...
Per unit.
Per unit. And so I wonder if you could speak to that. So, you know, I'm, I'm assuming your stu, these are either college students or a family would be here, walking, biking, taking the bus to school. Like, why is there a need for so much parking?
Sure. Happy to answer that, yeah. So we manage between 150 and 200 residential units in town, and at least for the student portion of those rentals, we see one car per capita. The college attracts a lot of, how do I say this? The folks that come to UMass tend to have cars. So in all of our rentals, we rarely see two cars in a four-bedroom, one car in a three-bedroom, even on the bus line. They will take the bus to school to not have to park on campus, but they'll take their car, go to Starbucks, and go grocery shopping, and go home on the weekend. So we very often see one car per capita, and of course, we can't park on College Street, so we wanted to bring all the parking off-street and not using the public resources for parking. There is a couple of side streets across the way, but that wouldn't be appropriate to have cars parked there. So that's why we're trying to allow that parking for the need.
I, I think a lot of people who live near student housing would agree with that and have said that, that the students have housed a lot of cars. Where would people park if they were visiting? That was another issue I saw, because definitely you're not parking on Route 9, and there's nothing really close by to park on.
Yeah, we don't have any additional space for visitors. The site's just too compact. You know, if it was a guest, if someone that was familiar with the residents, of course, they could perhaps double park behind one of their vehicles, knowing that they don't need to get out, or they could take public transportation or Uber, or get dropped off, or have their friends go pick them up. But as, as is fairly common with our off-campus rentals, there's not enough parking to have all the residents plus X number of guests.
Then, you know, I think the, sort of the major issue for me is the size of the lot. And so it looks like whoever did the two-family at 197, looks like they may have carved off a piece of 195 to get the lot requirement. But you need 2,500 additional square feet, and you don't, you don't come, you're 2,260 square feet short. And so this is a big waiver, I think, considering the, the requirements of the bylaw. And it sounds like most of the people, I mean, you manage a bunch of properties. Are they all with students, or there were some families or single people, or...
Not with neighborhood, this neighborhood is predominantly seen.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, Andrew?
Thanks for the presentation. I appreciate it, getting the additional context of the, of the surrounding houses. I just, a quick clarification, this, you mentioned a swale on the southern property. Is that to divert or to retain water?
It's to intercept it before it flows off-site, so there's a chance to, you know, let it infiltrate. And it also, it would also slow down the runoff, you know, so that it would potentially reduce any chance of erosive effects as it travels off the property and onto the Amherst College land.
Okay. And then, thanks for that. And then I was only going to add, like, I sometimes walk down to the Enterprise when I need to rent a car. The idea of like, there's no sidewalk and that's out of the street. So like, a walkway to Route 9 is just, seems kind of ridiculous, but...
Well, but we, we didn't think about the mailman either.
I get, I get why you're doing it, and I'm sure the mailman will be happy with it. It's not, it's, it's challenging. Thanks.
Any? Johanna?
Hi. How much space is left between the back of the house and where the native shrubs will be planted, where it's going to be grass?
Let's see. What's that, the 30, 27 and a half by 32? So it looks like it's about 30, about, about the width of that building, 32 feet or so to the swale from the back of the addition.
And the slope of that is...
It's, it's, it's not ideal. It's not flat, but it's usable. We try to, we try to even it out. I mean, certainly there's a chance of like, grate it off from the foundation and have it come down steeper and then flatten out. And I guess that, you know, it's an option if Alan would like to do it that way. But right now, it's shown as pretty much like, you can see those, these three contour lines, they're, they're even. And then it, it would flatten out beyond that.
I mean, it's interesting, because one of the key things that I'm thinking about is, we're very close to a wetland. We are already non-conforming in terms of the lot coverage. What are the additional ways to mitigate that? And one idea would be, you know, if it's, like, if you can't credibly set up a volleyball net, and it's, you know, like, the lawn doesn't work, do as much work for water retention as a rain garden or shrubs, and whether, whether bringing that a little bit closer and extending that, you know, if it, if it's not really that viable a recreation space, whether we can get more ecological down.
Sure. I mean, I think we could make an adjustment there and make it more usable, you know?
Right, either make it more usable, right, make it more usable for water retention, or make it more usable for recreation, and then, but it seems a little bit like, we're doing neither.
Just for clarity, are those elevation lines one feet?
One foot, yeah.
So it just drops away from the house, two and a half, three feet. So it's not a huge elevation change. We could kind of squeeze that to make a steeper drop-off, but you also have to have something that's mobile and serviceable, independent to Mike's point of, more run away from the side of the house. So there's a balance to strike there, too.
Any? Oh, Maria, please.
I have just a couple of comments, and then one question. When you're doing the snow management, just make sure they manage the removal with the gravel. I have a gravel driveway, and you just have to be really careful about, otherwise you're going to tear it up and have to re-gravel and follow out maintenance. The other comment is, I, it's a pet peeve of mine. Every time I see a roof sloping down over an entry, I just, the snow falling onto people coming out of a house. I always put a cover over entries and exits, but that's just a comment. And then the question, I think it was already brought up in the report, is are your exterior lights dark sky compliant? I know they're downward pointing, but they are. Okay. And I, I find that whether the adjacent properties got waivers or not, I think that this design and use fits with the other 20 or, or 10 properties already in that street. I feel like it's, it's a neighborhood that is already rentals and it's appropriately sized. The lot, there are a lot of, I've, I've worked in a lot of cities or towns where it seemed like the zoning was planned, and then they didn't carefully look at every parcel. And so there are a lot of just non-conforming parcels. And some streets are like that for entire streets. So I think this is sort of one of those that, yeah, it, it's good enough for a single family, but with a lot of the adjacent parcels already being multifamily, it seems like it was zoned, not looking carefully at what was already there and what was growing there. So, but otherwise, yeah, I, I don't have any other issues or comments. Thanks.
Any other questions? Doug?
Chris, sometime today you emailed us an analysis of the non-conformities, and I don't see that in the printout here, and I haven't really had time to digest it. I don't think I...
I'm not using my microphone. Maureen Pollock prepared this document here, which is the project application report, and I think you all have a copy of that. And I can run through the non-conformities. For one thing, the property is more narrow than it should be. It should be 100 feet wide, and instead it's 80 something feet wide. So that means that the property is non-conforming as to frontage, and it's also non-conforming because it can't contain the building circle that normally needs to be contained. It's non-conforming as to... It's non-conforming as to lot coverage, and it's non-conforming as to the side setback, which I don't think I mentioned in my email. And I don't think if there's any other thing that I know about. I think those are the things that I, that spring to my mind, but maybe there's
And then, yeah, then with the proposal, you know, there's the non-conformance with the additional size per, or additional lot size per family.
And there's a non-conformity, well, there won't be a non-conformity. They're asking for a waiver of the requirement of 2,500 square feet, an additional lot area per family. They're asking for that 2,500 to be reduced to 264 square feet. So, that's not a non-conformity. It's a modification that they're requesting under footnote A of the zoning bylaw, of Table 3. So, those are the things that I know about.
Janet?
Do you want board discussion now, or do you want to hear public comment? Or, because I have, I have sort of an issue I want to bring up, but I
Oh, go ahead and bring it up, and then
Okay. So, I'm pretty, my issue is pretty much Ken Rosenthal's issue from his email that we probably just got shortly before this meeting. And to me, the reduction from the 200, 2,500 square feet to, you know, you know, reducing it by 2,260 feet is just a bridge too far. And it's basically, to me, it's almost, it's rewriting the dimensional table. Mostly other houses meet it. And I think that the precedent it will lead to, and the concern to me, is anybody with a single-family house there with, without enough space to add another unit, is going to go for this, because there's so much money in student housing. And so, thinking $800 per student, you know, $3,200 a month extra, times 12, is a lot of money for an addition. And so I think this is, I think this is sort of the elephant in the room, is, yeah, we need more student housing, we need more affordable housing for families. There's all these different ways to add to a house. You can do a backyard ADU, but it's owner-occupied. You can do a converted dwelling, it's owner-occupied, or it has a resident manager living on-site. But I think that if we start giving, or the ZBA starts giving these, letting people go to unoccupied duplexes, these very affordable small houses that could be bought by a family, you know, I was a person who bought a rental, two-family rental house, and, you know, that can be converted, you know? And so, these kind of starter homes or affordable homes now are going to disappear, because the students always can pay more. And so if we start giving bigger and bigger waivers, allowing more and more of that, they're going to just become investor properties. And, but I do want to say, I think this, the architecture, the look of the ad is super traditional New England. It doesn't really, you know, I like the whole idea, the style, thought it was like a very traditional thing, but I think the idea of going to unoccupied duplexes, you know, hugely, huge decrease in lot size, I think we're just going in a direction that it's going to just lead to more and more small family houses being bought up and converted to unoccupied duplexes for money and students.
Doug?
I share the general sentiment. These are already all investor properties. And it seems like we've already, we're already experiencing that houses with four bedrooms are not within reach, or they're outbid by, from, you know, families are outbid by investors. So, you know, the houses that people can buy are the two-bedrooms and maybe a three-bedroom every now and then. So, I mean, I get the argument, that argument, but at the same time, I feel like this whole, this whole little neighborhood, you know, it should be zoned in a different way to start with, that allows denser housing on a major road. You know, why we have a dinky little neighborhood on Route 9 is kind of a real legacy.
Thank you. Anyone? Oh, Janet?
So, I just, I did look it up, and these are still affordable homes, like, 187 was, I think, bought for $270,000, which does, it's a lot of money, but not these days. 195 was bought for 260, the duplex was 430,000. And I think, I think kind of looking ahead is, you know, there, a lot of these houses are very shabby, there's beer pong going on, there's furniture sitting for weeks when the students move out. But I moved into a house like that, you know? And so, there's a chance that families can move in, they may buy it, it is an investor property. They may buy it and make it the duplex that's owner-occupied and turn that neighborhood around, so it's not so shabby, or it's a good start for somebody, because they have rental income and they can afford, you know, to buy it to begin with. So, I think that we want to leave that open. And the question is, is how small, like, how much of a waiver are we going to grant? Like, how small are we going to go, knowing it's going to be investor property, and that's going to start changing neighborhoods? Like, you can look at these houses, and I always figured they're probably worker housing for the factories that used to be there. They're really nice, cute houses that are kind of a little slummy-looking, not your house that you, you know, but they did, you know? But it's just like, you could see that was once a place. And, you know, it could be a duplex or a triplex, but if it was owner-occupied, it would be sort of doing the master plan of having mixed-income neighborhoods, you know, housing for families, or just, you know, people of moderate income. And I think we're, this is the kind of thing to switch, if we keep on doing that, or the ZBA does, we're just going to lose the small houses. I live in a neighborhood like this. Every, almost every house is 1,000 square feet and could become an unowner-occupied duplex.
Yeah, to reiterate what Doug was saying, definitely a good point, but again, this is, I think, we're going to be talking about accessory dwelling units later, and I think, and I recall that, you know, there is a level protecting, you know, single-family housing by having it owner-occupied, but where, you know, again, Doug said, this neighborhood is already, it's all rental, yeah, it's all rental. So, it, you know, we're not going to turn back time. Maria?
I can share this image, Chris, but I just want to show Janet that, don't think more about, like, the fact that they're asking for 2,000-square-foot waiver. All of these parcels are about the same size. I think you had shown a chart that showed the square footages of the existing parcels already being almost equal in size. In other words, they're already all non-conforming as far as the additional lot per additional unit on top of what's required per single-family house. So, the fact that it's, they're asking for a huge amount of square footage, that's, I think you have to think about conceptually by looking at the neighborhood. It's more just, they're matching what's already going on to all the parcels that are around it. If this was Sunset or Lincoln Avenue, of course I would look much more carefully and consider, oh, this maybe should be owner-occupied, or maybe they shouldn't ask for so many bedrooms per unit. But this is an area that's already been subdivided as far as the house itself into several units, and all of them are rentals. I don't feel like this is a detriment to the neighborhood, and I don't feel like this is setting a precedent for all of RG and all of RN and RL. This is, for this particular property on this street, looking at the adjacent parcels, it seems appropriate. It's not saying this is going to happen throughout Amherst.
Janet?
I wonder if the ZBA could put a condition on it that it's non-student housing, or, you know, it's not undergraduate housing, so it could be for families or, you know, people, you know, to create some space for people to rent, or, you know? Because it's one thing to say, oh, it's all gone to students anyway, and, you know, you look at Dickinson Street, if you look at all these cross-streets between Route 9 and Main Street, since I've lived there, they've gotten shabbier and shabbier, and they're going to students. And so, do we participate in that process, or do we want to keep some space for, like, mixed neighborhoods, mixed-income families, students living together? Like, are we going to take a role in that? And so, anyway, it's in my piece.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking this takes pressure off of students living elsewhere in town, so that, you know, you can look at it a different way, because students need housing, off-campus housing. And this will maybe save a single-family house somewhere else in town, sort of thing. So... Chris, please?
I would be surprised if a family would want to purchase a single-family house in this neighborhood, given the fact that there are only rentals there, and it's right on Route 9. It would be really amazing to me that someone would make that decision. When I looked for a house myself, I know I would not have made that choice. So, I think the fact that this is on a busy street, it's already surrounded by rentals, I drive by there and I see, you know, students out in the front lawn having parties and crossing the street, and, you know, all day Saturday, and it's just not a family neighborhood. So, I think it's really idealistic and perhaps wishful thinking to think that this could be a neighborhood that would be turned around. And I think the fact that all the other houses are rentals, and several of them are non-owner-occupied duplexes, makes me comfortable in making a recommendation that this could be approved. This could be logically approved.
Anyone else? Okay, open up to public comment? Please, come up to the desk, state your name and address, please. Yeah, and the mic.
So, my name is Janet Keller, and I live at 120 Pulpit Hill Road. And thank you for having me here to comment. So, I appreciate the care that ever comes to with this. And I appreciate the context that we're dealing with. And what I want to tell you about is something I've been working on the last six years, and trying to get low-income people, families into housing, and how hard that is, and that I'm going to watch a family in the next 14 days fail after looking for nine months and having a significant subsidy from Amherst Community Land Trust, trust from the Community Preservation Act money, fail to find a home that the three of them can afford. So, I'm here to beg you, I mean, it breaks my heart to turn away a real family and not be able to help them. And I beg you in going forward to really commit to addressing, making family, small family houses available, and not have them be in other neighborhoods, not have this pattern continue, because it's hurting real families. And I now understand what I just was kind of scratching my head, why are our families disappearing in Amherst? And this is a significant part of the problem, and let's try to keep the lower-priced four and five-room houses, and even some duplexes. How I got here was buying a duplex and renting, living in one floor and renting the other. So, right now, it's the lowest priority, affordable housing is the lowest priority in the CRC zoning priorities. Please make it your highest priority.
Thank you, Janet. And, oop, Ira, state your name and address again, please? Oh, absolutely, thank you. More Ira's, the better.
Ira Brick, and 255 Strong Street. I want to point out that my house, at 255 Strong Street, I bought it from a family who turned it from 21 college students, living in a four-bedroom house, to a family house, and sold it to a family. And if you don't uphold the standards, the dimensional tables, if you let non-conforming houses become more non-conforming, even with the excuse of that neighborhood has already turned to houses with couches and beer pong, you're basically ruining the credibility of what you do. You're turning zoning in this town into something that most developers are going to think is flexible and not standards. And that's not your job. Your job is to create standards and uphold those standards. So, I'm just encouraging you to uphold the standards, which right now are seen as extremely flexible and wavable. And that's not good for me or any other family living in town. I purposely live in a college town, but it's also a town. And it's your job to uphold standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please, come to the chair and state your name and address again. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you again. Pam Rooney, 42 Cottage Street. I've heard a couple things tonight that I'm really appreciative of the discussion that's happening about this. I, I agree with the fact that this stretch of College Street really ought to be its own zone. It really is not indicative of RG. Many of us live in RG. And I think one of my concerns has been expressed by people in different ways, but the translation of the non-owner-occupied precedent of turning something into clearly and irrevocably a student rental unit from what is now single-family, I am strongly supportive of the accessory dwelling units. And ironically, being owner-occupied actually reduces the size of something that can be built. It also reduces the capacity that is allowed on a site, which, for the neighbors, is really good. But it's very interesting that owner-occupancy, in fact, doesn't reap the same reward that a non-owner-occupied investor gets to take advantage of. So, again, just thinking about that translation of this precedent, although the architecture is carefully done, it looks like many of its neighbors, I think, again, it is sort of that precedent of where else in the RG are we going to then start seeing the creation of duplexes on parcels that are clearly substandard in size? It was interesting, when I looked at the, at the town map, there's 187, which is this property, and then there's 197, 197, and in between is this wonderful 195, which had 10 cars parked on it. So, that to me tells me that you're renting to 10 people in 195 College Street, and I think that's probably not, not very conducive to ever becoming a family neighborhood at all. It's clearly going in the wrong direction. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I see none. Mike Allen, you can respond or not to any?
So, I guess what I would like to respond with is what yourself and I think Ms. Chow had mentioned is, I don't know that this is necessarily setting a precedent town-wide. I think the whole purpose of the planning and zoning boards is to look at each individual circumstance and each individual request, and to take input from those butters and those neighbors, and to take the input of what is the neighborhood, and is it suitable? Is this more detrimental to the neighborhood? That is the biggest thrust before the zoning board that we had in the first meeting was, is this proposal more detrimental to this neighborhood? Not any other RG neighborhood, not any other G house, this particular one block on College Street. And I think that it's not. I think that that table showed four non-owner-occupied duplexes in immediate proximity that was to the square foot, the same lot size. I think that the zoning and the planning board processes work very well in that you do have to come here and present what you do have to come here and present what you want to do. It's not a free-for-all. It's not a, oh, well, they did it so I can do it. You have to come here. You have to get permission. You have to show everything, do all of your research, do all of your surveys. And then the board gets to decide with public input whether it's appropriate. And the only other thing that I wanted to mention, as a housing professional in town, certainly the friction zones, as I like to think of them, is when you start to get out into predominantly single-family homes that are owner occupied. And I always tell our applicants, if we have one of those, I say, look, this is predominantly a single-family, working person, professional neighborhood. So they're not going to tolerate any kind of unreasonable behavior. College Street, Main Street is not as much of a concern. Not to say that they would do that. We are, you know, we manage these properties carefully. We do drive-bys every Monday. We check up on the properties. If you look in the permitting and complaint history, we've never had a complaint of a couch on the front lawn at this property. We're cognizant of that. We watch for that. We manage that. That's our job. So to, students are a part of our community. UMass is a part of our community. They do need off-campus housing. And to allow it here where it is in kind with the uses, to your point, Mr. Chair, perhaps could save those students to go to a single-family where there are no conditions, there are no restrictions. It's a single-family. One of the prior zoning board chairs so eloquently said, when we grant a zoning special permit, we can put conditions on the property to control its use and to control the number of people, the number of cars. Whereas those single families out on Grantwood Drive, for example, they don't have that control. It's a single-family and the rental is used allowed by right under the current zoning. So I feel that, in a sense, we are trying to be good shepherds by providing housing here where it's in kind with other uses and of minimal impact to some other areas where it wouldn't be appropriate under RG. And I think that, as Ms. Chow mentioned, those voices would come out if it was in an area where that was much less appropriate. So I think it's a case-by-case rather than a setting precedent for the whole town of RG zoning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug?
Alan, before you leave, I've got a question for you. And I confess, this is probably a hypothetical conversation, but from a developer's point of view or a property manager's point of view, what kept you from trying to put two more units on this property and coming to us and saying, this area's turned over, it's all student rental, and who would really care if there was another unit on this property? What kept you from that? Was it us? You know, I mean, because it's the same argument, right?
Yeah, I take your point. I think that the site starts to become limiting just on size. If you look at some of the things that have happened in town that are controversial with the four-story buildings with 30 units on a lot that's maybe twice this size, you start to run out of room at some point. To be in kind with a neighborhood and to not be more detrimental is what would restrict it to a certain size or a certain number of dwelling units.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we voting or are we just the context of our comments enough?
You can vote if you want to. You can vote to recommend that this be approved or that it not be approved. You can vote to recommend certain conditions. I think there were some conditions that you mentioned already that I could read them to you.
I have a question. Use your mic first. I can hear you.
Your mic on?
It is on now, is it?
Okay.
Is it on now? Okay. So Ms. Newman recommended a condition that said that the backyard should be more usable, either as a water retention area or for recreation. Ms. Chow recommended that you put a cover over the entry so that people don't get rained on when they walk in. I think she also wanted to make sure that the lights were going to be dark sky compliant. Those may be the two that I have, other than, you know, other people have recommended not approving, or not recommending approval. So if you wanted to recommend approval, you could mention those two things as conditions. And I'm not sure if there were other conditions that the board wanted to recommend.
Any further discussion on conditions?
I was thinking about bike storage area. I was thinking of Johannes' concern. There's no place to store bikes. And so, or maybe there is.
We actually are showing bike storage right over here to the right of the walkway.
Did you, do you have a comment?
No.
Okay. So someone want to make a motion to vote on this or not? I have no preference. Tom?
I'll move to vote to recommend this.
Okay. Any seconds?
One second.
Okay. Andrew, any discussion?
I have a quick discussion item. I actually, I'm not sure what the ZBA needs from us. Do they prefer a recommendation or do they just, would they be interested in this discussion, which had more depth to it than yeah, approve it, or no, don't? Do you know what I mean? Like, do they prefer to hear what we were thinking or would they prefer just to get yes or no? Or can we speak for them?
So normally, they would receive a recommendation, yes or no, with conditions. They can watch the video of this meeting if they want to really get a full, you know, grip on what you talked about. Minutes of this meeting probably won't come out for a while, so thinking that they would get a copy of the minutes before they vote is probably not realistic. So we could suggest that they watch this first part of the planning board meeting.
So because I don't want to lose you, this is not directly related to the project, but since you're here, I just, I'm curious about the parking and the one-to-one capita, whoops, comment that you made, because we've got, you know, many developers coming in front of us with different parking, well, Mike knows. I mean, it's.
Yeah, Mike keeps saying that.
And I'm curious, if you did not have all that parking, would you not be able to retain tenants? Or would they find another way in terms of like getting long-term parking at UMass and just working around it, using the bus system, you know, the bus route, that sort of thing?
I'll answer that with a bit more of a comment where, you know, we do our Monday morning drive-bys on all of these properties just to make sure that, among other things, parking is being observed and the limits are being observed. And my concern is if you squeeze the parking, they're going to try to still shoehorn those cars in there or park on the side street. You know, we've had a couple of other projects where this has come up, and we had eight spaces plus two guest spots, and the board was lighting the guest spots. And the question came up earlier, where do the guests park? You know, friends come over, girlfriends, boyfriends come over, parents come over. So to reduce the parking would make it more, it would exacerbate the parking situation. And I think that the overflow would possibly go to public parking, you know, the side streets, South Whitney Street, Railroad Street, where it is allowed. There was a project, Amherst College had a big project on their physical plant, and I manage a property on Railroad Street, and the physical plant workers were parking all the way down the street on both sides. The trash driver called me and says, I can't even get in Railroad Street because, and it was illegally parked on the side of the lumberyard, and the police had to come and make a temporary parking ban. But my point is that I think that in a lot of areas of town, the parking resources are strained, and this is an attempt to manage all of our parking onsite as opposed to putting it offsite somewhere else.
Thank you. I'm just curious about that. Andrew?
Just since you're here, you'd mentioned a couple of times you do your drive-bys. On Monday, do you ever do drive-bys in the weekend?
No, not typically. We're a Monday through Friday kind of a company. We're available, you know, for complaint response 24/7, but Monday morning is the first look we get after the weekend.
So we ready to take a vote? I guess we just raise hands? I think that's, it's been such a long time.
How do we do that?
Yeah, all in favor? And that's six. Six and against? So six, one. Great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
All righty.
You have digital copies of the plan already, don't you?
Can you send us the digital copy, the latest copy that you, well, it's?
Do you want me to leave it on the machine or email it to you?
Please email it to me. Yeah.
So it's almost eight o'clock. I just wanted to take a few-minute break because I forgot my water and just want to get a drink. And it's, seems like it's a good time. Presentation, review, and recommendations on a proposed academic building to be located at 197 and 205 South Pleasant Street. So state your name and.
Okay. Thanks very much. My name's Tom Davies. I'm the Director of Design and Construction for Amherst College. And I want to thank you all for agreeing to have this informal review. There are a couple of things that I'll talk about about this project that are, you know, just a little funny or, you know, unusual anyway. And one of them is it's not in the ED zone, so obviously there's stuff there. But we are moving ahead, as it says, we're in design development. We're about halfway through the design process. We're not at the point where we can come to you with all of the detail that's necessary, but we want to kind of make sure that the big building blocks, that there's nothing that we're missing that's somehow controversial. So I will give you a quick overview. This doesn't have to be a big, long thing. It can be as big and long as you want it to be. So there's an existing house, 197 South Pleasant Street. It used to be occupied by a college administration person. It's been vacant for a number of years. The President's House is kind of right off the screen to the right here. This is kind of looking from the octagon, a view that no one will ever have, actually. The addition is to the south, and this is going to be an academic building, basically classrooms and offices. So again, the existing building is here. The President's House is up here. You know, we've got South Pleasant running by and an addition that kind of wraps around it. The form of it is self-evident. There's what the architects are calling the cube, which, you know, is copacetic with the massing of the existing building, and then an office wing on the west side and the entry off the south, you know, some landscape that runs across here. So actually, I think I want to skip to the site plan.
I'm just trying to get perspective. Where's the nearest cross street?
Just off the screen to the left here would be Walnut, which is the first little drive.
Okay.
So if you can imagine where the cursor is, is the octagon. So this would be kind of looking from the front steps of Johnson Chapel toward the west. But I was going to pull up the plan, not that one.
Okay.
I was going to pull up this. And I hope that's legible.
Okay.
Okay. So again, here's the octagon at the top of the hill. Most people recognize that. Johnson Chapel, kind of the campus proper over on this side. The site is right where the hand is. And this is the outline of the proposed addition, South Pleasant Street and Walnut, cutting back to Woodside Ave on the backside here. So if I could scroll up further, you would see the President's House. There's a wooded area off the backyard here that's used for events and whatnot. And then we have a couple of academic and then administrative buildings to the north of that, you know, kind of marching up to the corner. So this is really continuing the massing pattern and the vocabulary of the rest of the road up this way and kind of, you know, it is a change, obviously, to the nature of this part of the streetscape. And we anticipate that just to the south of that, eventually, this is a college-owned rental property. We will not be expanding it for a second unit. And that eventually, this is identified as another, you know, future building site as well as to the west. Catagin Center is a former single-family home that's been used as a religious center for 25 years or so. And so this kind of whole little district here will eventually be developed for other academic functions, but nothing on the horizon and probably not in my tenure. But, so the things I wanted to talk about about this project is that, obviously, there's the building itself. But we are proposing that the access to the building, right now, there's a little driveway for the house that drops right onto South Pleasant Street. It's rather steep. It's really not appropriate in a number of ways for a campus building and for the campus vocabulary that we're planning to kind of bring into this whole area. We're proposing that there is a new drive that comes up, a single-lane drive that comes up from Woodside through the Catagin Center property to service the building. So that's kind of one piece to it. The second piece is that we are proposing that there is very limited parking at the building, probably two spaces, both handicap, and that we're creating a walkway that kind of works its way across this site to an existing parking lot behind Newport, which is a dormitory. That parking is actually, though, used for faculty and staff. And we would expand that parking lot a little bit to do that. And then the next piece that's unusual, and I know that, I know there are a few of them, is that we are proposing adding another crosswalk at this location. There is an existing crosswalk just south of Walnut, but this is felt to be really important because otherwise people will be kind of cutting across. You don't want that. And we have two up here at the entrance to Quad Drive, and having two here, we feel is appropriate as well. We're extending the walkway network from the campus to the lyceum front entryway. And in so doing, this is all designed to be handicap accessible, and at that point, it ties into the handicap accessible route that actually ties through the entire rest of the campus. I said entire, but it's like 98% of the campus. So, okay, so maybe with that, I can kind of go back to pictures and graphics and kind of give you a quick overview that way. And then I'll come to the, whoops, there we go. So maybe that provides a little bit more context for what you see in these renderings. But the new crosswalk would be essentially, here's not shown, essentially running across just to the south of the building, coming up to a landscaped area. We're extending the vocabulary of the campus into this area with gardens, working with a terrific design team, Bruner-Cott for the architects around here, probably the Kern Center at Hampshire College is one of their buildings. I think they did something at UMass. Oh, they've done a number of the dining halls, I think, at UMass. And Stimson Landscape Architects have been terrific to work with. And that's important because of this kind of, you know, creating campus from really what is kind of a unplanned residential backyards and whatnot. So this is, you know, early design, but the general idea of how you would approach the building. the building. Again, a sloped walkway, lawn area off to the left that could be used for events. One of the things that I should mention is that currently there is a small house in this exact location, which is being moved. You may have read about this or heard about it, but there is someone who's purchasing the house from us, picking it up and moving it in August, we heard, down to, well, it's not University Drive, it's the south, just south of University Drive. Anyway, that, that small wood-framed house is going to be relocated, which is a great answer for us because we didn't want to have to demolish it. But it is in the way of this project. The, you know, types of materials that we're looking at are kind of what you would guess, stone, brick. There is some existing painted brick. We're not going to paint any more brick. It is a very high-performance building, so we'll have triple-glazed windows and, you know, R-50 insulation and things along those lines, green roof on top of the cube part. Eventually, we'll, you know, tell you all about the specifics of that stuff. So, that's kind of the overview of that. Photovoltaics, hopefully, it's actually, we're hoping for a budgeting, budget source to be able to do that. And the next kind of little bit of a tricky part to this is that the existing lot is not large enough, but that's okay. We own all the other lots around it. So, we'll be going through an A&R process to address that. I asked my friends to take a stab at that, but we actually haven't even started the process. But we're just guessing that there'll be a couple of different property boundaries that will be changing and going through the legal process to change those. And obviously, there's plenty of land in aggregate. We won't have any issues with, you know, setbacks or lot coverage or anything like that. So, that's the quick whirlwind, and you can probably see now why we wanted to come in and talk with you in advance.
Thank you, Tom.
Sure.
Janet?
Do you, do you have like a Google, Google Street view of what's there now, like just along that street from the President's House past Walnut Street? I mean, I feel like I should know this because I go by there all the time.
I don't have any other images like that with me, but I don't know. Can I pull that up here? Can I just like go onto the internet? Is that okay?
Let me try.
See what happens. Hey! Google Maps is what we're looking for. Okay. Oh, this is so exciting. Hopefully, I can navigate here.
Get the little yellow guy.
And then you go to this guy. And then you go here. Okay. And, okay, so, oh, we're down the road too far. Sorry. I've got to go up the road. Okay. So, now we're getting to Walnut. That's the existing crosswalk. This is that small, smaller rental unit on the corner. And behind this tree is the house that is being moved, right here. I think it's 193 or something like that. And then, there's a big hedge, so you can't even see the property. But this is 197 and the existing house. And we can just keep on clicking along here. Whoops, sorry about that, I guess. This is that kind of wooded area with the, whoops, with the lawn behind the President's House. Then you get to the President's House, which is really largely an administration house. And then, not Barrett Hall, what is that? Morgan Hall and College Hall on the corner.
Did you go back down the hallway?
Go back down here?
There aren't currently driveway cuts. Is that right, across South Pleasant?
There, there is. Where is it? So, there's this funny little stair, which, you know, is just an ancient relic. We're going to remove that. And here is the driveway cut. Maybe you can get down a little bit further. You can see it's, well, you can't really tell, but it's really steep from here to the sidewalk. And obviously, this is all town land out here, you know, up to the edge of the sidewalk. I guess that's another thing that we're going to want to talk to you about is we are intending to improve the sidewalk up to the building as well, from the corner up to the building, which generally the town is okay with us, you know, improving town sidewalks. But it's something we need to go through with you as well. But yeah, that's, that's the existing driveway. There's another one here to that house that's going to be relocated.
Any other questions? Maria and Doug? Okay.
Thanks, Tom. I really appreciate how you're thinking about the flow both for cars and people and that it'll really connect back to campus well. And I also personally really appreciate you taking on a risk of putting, proposing more modern architecture. I know it's early in development, but I appreciate that you're trying to look forward and, you know, match the scale and sort of the openings, but then have a new twist on like, here's where we're going with our future and, you know, we're putting grass roof and TVs and, and, you know, really well-insulated windows. So, I think all those are great characteristics, and I hope that value engineering doesn't get rid of any of those.
Me too.
But, yeah, I just look forward to seeing more development as far as the circulation. You know, this is a building where a lot of people have to come. Yeah, we've, like, we've been talking, where's the parking? How do you get from point A to point B? So, it is a really tricky site. I, it's uphill both ways. You know, I've ridden my bike so many times, and so it's a lot of grade to manage. So, I appreciate that you're thinking about that early on because that's a big part of how you're going to site the building. I guess, yeah, right now, we don't have a lot of information, but those are just great things that you're looking into. So, look forward to seeing more.
Good.
Thanks for, thanks for coming and giving us the preview. First question, as part of constructing the new crosswalk, do you intend to use the same materials as the other crosswalks along this stretch, which I always make sure I come very, very close to the existing curb so that I'm not in the area that has fallen? And would you be doing any repairs to the, those crosswalks at this time?
Well, seeing as how I'm in Town Hall, I'm not sure how honest I want to be with you about how that was supposed to work out. The college paid for and installed all of that with the understanding that the town would maintain it. And that was now, you know, a good 12 or 15 years ago, so, you know, different people, I don't know, whatever. But yeah, we recognize that it, there are a couple there that have some real dips, and it's not good. And, you know, trucks go bounding through, and, you know, if you're in a building nearby, it shakes, you know? There's a heck of a lot of concrete underneath there. So, you know, the bones of those crosswalks are really solid, and it's really the finish that needs to be repaired. It's not a huge thing, but quite honestly, it's just not something that has risen to the level of like, you know, dealing with it. I think it should be dealt with, and I'm happy to say that, you know, publicly. How it gets dealt with, I think, is a good, is a good question.
So, if we limit our conversation to the new one?
Yes.
Would it be constructed essentially consistent with the original construction of the other ones, or is it a different approach?
Yeah. No, our intention would be that they would be the same general approach. And, you know, the, the issue is really kind of a periodic maintenance and how that happens. There was one significant difference, though, that we're in conversations around traffic calming on that road. The, the speed limit in that area is actually 40 miles an hour, believe it or not. So, cars are often going more like 45, you know, sometimes even more than that. And so, we have engaged a traffic engineer and have started conversations with different parts of the town, you know, organization to figure out ways to decrease the speed along there. One of the things that we're going to be proposing is the new standard for crosswalks are these flashing horizontal beacons, different from what we've used, you know, elsewhere that are kind of little flashing things on a post, low post. So, that would be one thing. And then we're hopeful that we are going to be able to take some, you know, that other measures will be acceptable that would reduce traffic speed along there. And what those might be is speculation at this point, but we're hopeful that we can do, make meaningful changes to reduce traffic speed.
Okay. Thank you. I assume this is not in the zone that the Design Review Board of the town would have any review. So, so the design input you're going to get is solely going to be coming from us. So, so similar to the comments that Maria made, I'll be quite interested in how the modernist interpretation evolves. It has always, I've always assumed that the college had been deliberate about keeping the area, let's say, all in front of Johnson Chapel and the octagon, that that area was intentionally kind of kept in its pristine, original state. And so, and that most of your modern buildings were farther back or, you know, off to the side. So, this does feel like maybe the first arrival or intrusion, depending on your perspective, of more modernist approach. And I guess the decision whether to make it a contrast or more subtle is something that I'll be interested to see how you, how that evolves. It seems like the last similar project you did was of the former Baptist Church.
Yeah.
And that one, you know, the, clearly, it's a modernist addition on the back, but it's on the back so that it's, it's less, you know, just less prominent. And so, just a, just a comment.
Thank you, Doug.
I had kind of a similar comment, just that I walk up here all the time, and I love the feel of this area. I think it also, like, this, to me, it sort of piggybacks on the Woodside residential neighborhood behind it. And would just want to point out that it is a, you know, while, while what I saw, I thought looked great, it is a radical departure from what we have there today. So, I know there have been concerns around town about maintaining character, and we just want to also call that out. Thanks.
Thank you. Chris, yeah, Chris, please, and then Janet?
I just wanted to piggyback on what Doug and Maria said because the new Science Center is visible from the street. So, when you come into town from the east and you look to the left, you do see the new Science Center, and it's quite prominent, really, and it is a very modern building. But because of the materials and the way it's designed, it doesn't feel like an intrusion. It feels like it fits where it's, where it is.
Janet?
So, these comments have emboldened me. I, when I first saw the picture, which we didn't look at that long, I kind of wanted it either to be more traditional and maybe match the character of the area of the building or more interesting, like a little bit more different or more modern. I also love what I think is the green roof, but I just thought it just, I kind of wanted it to go one way or the other more, so.
Doug?
Can I, can I also say that I believe Bruner-Cott did the white block of housing that's behind Judy's?
What's that?
No? Okay.
Sorry, I'm not familiar with that.
Okay. Well, that cube kind of reminded me of that building.
Chris?
I think the Boltwood Place is what Doug is referring to. I think that was done by Holst Architects out of Portland. And they proceeded to do other buildings for Archipelago, and they're no longer working with Archipelago from what I can tell.
Any?
Can I ask? I mean, I'll have to look this up later. Maybe it doesn't really matter. Maybe Bruner-Cott was the architect of record with the Massachusetts license, but-
Any other questions for Tom? All right. Public comment? There we go. Now, let's get your name and address again. Thanks.
Thanks. Pam Rooney, 42 Cottage Street. This is a terrific project. It looks, it's kind of neat to see the addition, especially more prominent to the public eye because a lot of your new stuff is not in the public eye. As a not frequent but regular user of West Street, I think I would, I would urge second consideration of consolidating the crosswalks near the intersection of Walnut Street. It's where people would expect to see people crossing. It's where people would slow down a little bit, probably, coming down over the hill. I'm always a little taken aback when I do come to the, the crosswalks that are there now. And I would just, I just think you could do a very elegant, simple, but very clearly marked crosswalk at that intersection, which, which I believe could be safer. I would, there are, again, elegant and, and simple ways to try to deflect pedestrian traffic so they don't pick the route across the street, but rather go to where the crosswalk is. And perhaps if, if you were to take some time to look at different options for that, it might create a safer and, and perhaps consolidated maintenance zone instead of having four different crosswalks across West Street. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comment, public comment? Okay, see none. I think we're all set, right, Chris?
I can just, real quick-
You want to respond to that?
Respond to that, sure. The, the location of the crosswalk is required to, in order to create an accessible pathway. If it's further south, we can't create an accessible pathway. The town sidewalk is too steep, and so it's, that's part of the reason why it's designed the way it is. It's, you know, generally, we understand that it's generally, you know, best practice to have crosswalks, you know, closer to roadways. However, you know, they're, they're not always, right? In the DOT's project of redoing North Hampton Road, they're, they're not necessarily at roadways. So, but anyway, it's necessary for the accessibility. So, just to let you know.
Good. Chris, please?
I had a question about accessing the site and the building from Woodside Avenue. And acknowledging that Woodside Avenue is a residential street, and I'm just wondering, you said that the parking lot there would probably not be very large.
Two spaces. We actually proposed one, but we're getting pushed back internally to have two.
So you're not expecting a lot of traffic there?
No. They're both handicap spots, which means theoretically, they're very rarely used.
All right. And I wanted to just have Rob Mora be able to comment on that. And I know in the past, when we've had projects where there's a use that's more intense and the access is through a neighborhood, sometimes it's a challenge. So I guess the question is, is that all RG? Okay, so that's the answer to my question. So I don't really have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, great. Thank you all. Yeah, we'll be back, you know, with more, more detail, having seen other groups, much more. And I'll attempt to figure out how to turn all this off.
Great.
Okay.
All right, so our next item is to discuss several zoning priorities. The first being the continued discussion about proposed changes to mixed-use buildings, section 3.325 of the zoning bylaw, the definition standards and criteria, and...
So Maureen Pollock is here, planner, and she's going to present these three zoning amendments to you.
Oh, all three, great.
Good evening, everyone. It's so nice to see you in person.
Yeah.
So bear with me for one moment.
Yeah, so make sure you're, you're close to that mic for your presentation, please.
So which, are we, we're going to start with the mixed-use building? Okay. So I, I'm filling in for Nate Malloy, who I believe has another meeting tonight. So I'm going to first review a short PowerPoint presentation about the mixed-use building use, and then we can look at the draft amendment language, so.
May I just say one word or two words of introduction? We're hoping that we can bring these three zoning amendments, mixed-use buildings, apartments, and the parking component, to the Town Council on June 28th and have them refer it back to the Planning Board and the CRC for public hearing. And the CRC has already heard these proposals, these presentations, and has made their comments, and they feel comfortable having this go to Town Council. But we wanted to make sure that the Planning Board was satisfied with it, and then we will bring it to Town Council. So I just wanted to say that in advance.
Thank you, Chris. So what we're, we're going, what I'm going to be talking about with you all is section 3.325, the mixed-use building use in the zoning bylaw. The first two slides will, I would like just to have a refresher of what is the existing language in the bylaw. So although there isn't a definition in Article 12 for mixed-use buildings, there is one in, in the use chart. So a mixed-use building shall be a building containing dwelling units in combination with permitted retail, business, institutional, government, public service, consumer service, office, or similar principal uses and lawful accessory uses. The applicant would need to provide a management plan, and that the applicant would need to meet the findings under 10.38 if they're going through the ZBA or through 11.24, which is through, you all, through the Planning Board in respect to the site and potential conflicts between the residential and commercial uses. So if a mixed-use building is located in the limited business district but not abutting the general business district, so for example, these will be parcels along University Drive, a special permit is required for, if there's more than 10 dwelling units above the first floor. If located in the commercial district, that same requirement would be, would be needed, a special permit if there's more than 10 units above the first floor. And then the last three bullets get into, in the commercial district, no dwelling unit nor any internal space associated with the dwelling unit shall comply, occupy any first-floor portion of a building facing onto a street, public plaza, or other space customarily used by the public. The first-floor residential dwelling units and any required entries there, too, shall be located on the rear buildings adjacent to any required parking and private open space associated with any, associated with and serving those units. And last bullet says, no more than 40% of the first floor gross-floor area shall be used for residential purposes, which shall include not more than 15% of said gross-floor area associated or incidental to, whether for storage, required entries, stairs, elevator, towers, or other purposes, any residential uses on upper floors. This slide, which is a similar slide that you've seen before, is, shows the zoning districts that allow mixed-use buildings. And I have on the, the column to the right is apartments, just as a comparison. So the mixed-use building is allowed by special permit in the Village Center residence, and it's allowed by special permit in the limited business, Village Center business, neighborhood business, general business, and commercial zoning districts. So where are those districts? So here's a townwide map that points to the different sort of clusters or zoning districts that allow mixed-use buildings, starting in order. So a mixed-use building is allowed in the BBC in this location, which is basically where Atkins Grocery Store is located, at the corner of West Bay and West Street. Here, again, it's allowed in the BBC. This map shows the BBC located at the corner of Belcher Town Road and Gatehouse Road. This map shows the downtown area to Route 9, to the Route 9 Southeast Street sort of intersection. And so you can see that, that downtown is allowed in the BG and the abutting BL district downtown. And then here in this cluster, on Main Street, between Main and College Street, along, let's see here, Dickinson Street and Railroad Street, and then along, along the corridor of College Street to the surrounding parcels around the Southeast Route 9 and Main Street intersections. Here is North Amherst, the intersection at the sort of North Amherst Village, I guess, the intersection of Meadow Pine Street and North Pleasant Street. It's allowed in the commercial district, the BBC, and the RBC. And it's, mixed-use buildings are allowed in the zoning districts around the Palmeroy Village Center intersection, along West Palmeroy, Palmeroy, and West Street. And I believe, last but not least, these, it's allowed in the BL zoning district, which is shown in this map, along University Drive. And then this red little parcel here, or multiple parcels right here, is the commercial district, which is along South Pleasant Street, and that is where the Farmers Cooperative is located, is a landmark. So the problem statement of the existing regulations, "Planning staff find that the current standards and conditions do not clearly define a mixed-use building or provide guidance on the type and orientation of uses, and the provisions in the commercial district are problematic." So we feel, we have proposal strategies to address these problems, which is firstly, have a definition in Article 12 that defines mixed-use building use, provide standards, standards for orientation of uses, provide a provision of project open space, require outdoor amenities, diversify bedroom count, and apply the design review principles and standards. And we wanted to provide a couple examples of existing projects that do meet the project open space as proposed. So this parcel here on East Pleasant Street includes the two buildings that contain the Florishaw, Henyon, and Shared Coffee at 178 North Pleasant Street. So as I will get into more detail when we get to the language, the proposed project open space would require 10% of project open space of the building footprints. So here, the building footprint is 4,275 square feet, and this property provides 10% of, more, more than 10% of, 10% required for project open space, they provide about 560 square feet with walkways, benches, and shrubs. And here is another example, located at Boltwood Place. The building footprint is 2,540 square feet. They provide the project open space requirement of 10% is 254, and they provide 750 square feet with walkways and trees.
Could you point out where that is?
Oh, sure, yes.
It's hard to see.
Oh, sorry. It's the purple building, and so where my mouse is sort of hovering over would be the, would be the, the 753 square feet.
So, so if I've been looking at the photograph, so how much is the sidewalk and how much is, I guess it's kind of a small photograph, but it's hard for me to see what's the sidewalk and what's the open space, but maybe that's the point.
Well, it, so it is here and actually looping around here, I believe. And the sidewalk...
Is the sidewalk in white?
You know, it's both, actually. So this is within the property, so this, the white here is, is owned by the town, and then you'd see the, the trees and the, and the tree grates, and they have a walkway on the property itself. So it's, it's a wider sidewalk.
Chris, please?
I just wanted to point out that this GIS map is old. It's from 2009, and it was actually prior to the building being built. There is a nicely landscaped area, including a path, but landscaping along both sides of it, to the south of this building that doesn't show up in this plan, and nor do the trees show up in the plan that would be to the east of the building. So if, so probably if you went on GIS and looked at the aerial photograph, I think that would show the realistic scenario, but this plan doesn't.
Thank you, Chris. Okay. And, see enclosure for draft language. Do you have any questions before we move into the draft language?
Anyone?
Okay.
Actually, I was wondering, what are the problems in CAM with the mixed-use building standards? Because you sort of referenced it, but can you explain them?
Yeah, sure. And let me open up that slide. So there is, the problem is, is that there's all these sort of standards in the commercial district, but we feel that these standards and others should be applied for mixed-use buildings throughout the town, where the zoning districts allow mixed-use buildings, and it shouldn't be just limited to the commercial district. So that was just...
So the problem isn't actually in CAM?
Well, maybe...
It's, it's, it's correct the way you want it in CAM, and you want to extend that elsewhere?
Yeah, more or less, yes.
Chris?
So one of the problems that we see is that a special permit is required for a mixed-use building if it has more than 10 units above the first floor. So that's one of the problems that we're trying to address with this. Just wanted to point that out. And also the fact that there's that 15% associated with storage, required entries, elevators, and towers. What we'd like to do is roll it all into one number, like you can have 40% of retail, commercial space, and up to 60% of residential or parking. Some of the other things can still apply, like we want, if there is residential space on the first floor, that it should be in back. But these are all things that are currently required, and we're trying to figure out what would be, what we really want now to be required. So some of these things we'll keep, and some of them we won't keep, or if we keep them, we'll change them. Does that make sense?
I'm not familiar with the Belcher Town Road BBC district. What is, what is that currently? Is there...
You know, that is the one that I haven't actually gone and done my little research. So, Chris, yeah.
So that's the area around where you go into Echo Hill?
Yep, yep.
And if you go left into, if you're coming out of town and you go left up Gatehouse Road, there's a big complex on the left that used to be more commercial, and it actually had a little retail store there.
Yeah, Amherst Insurance, maybe?
Yep. And Amherst Insurance is still there. They've added a lot of residential use to that area, but it is still a mixed-use building, and mixed-use buildings are allowed in that, in that area.
Any other questions for Maureen or Chris? The next part.
Okay. See how we can make this larger? Let's go like this. Okay, so I may repeat information that has been said before, so please cut me off if you said, if you feel like you've reviewed something agnazium in the past. So, so here, these, this is the draft language for both Article 12 and for section 3.325. And so as I read before, this was sort of the definition that was in the use chart, and we are crossing it out and actually proposing to add it into Article, Article 12 itself. And so it takes that language, but expands upon new, new criteria or a new definition, if you will. So a mixed-use building is a building containing one or more dwelling units in combination with permitted non-residential uses and parking uses where no, no more than 60% of gross-floor area of the first or ground floor shall be a combination of residential use or parking. The residential uses and parking on the first or ground floor shall be at the rear of the parking and designed to reduce visibility from the public way or walkway, walkways in areas accustomedly used by pedestrians and public. So I believe in the last revision, the percentage here shown was at 50%. Planning staff has looked at existing mixed-use buildings around town, such as U-Drive South, Kendrick Place, and other developments. And there is a consistent theme that we're noticing that, that, you know, residential uses on the floor, first floor tend to be at the upper threshold of 60%, and there is a, a lower rate of non-residential uses found on the first floor, which is, you know, somewhere between 40 and 50%. And so this sort of sentence here is trying to, is saying that there should be a minimum of 40% of non-residential uses with a maximum of 60% for residential uses on the... of 40% of non-residential uses with a maximum of 60% for residential uses on the first or ground floor, and that these requirements or percentages would not be able to be waived by a special permit granting authority. And so, and this sentence here about residential uses and parking on the first or ground floor shall be at the rear of the building and designed to reduce the visibility from the public way or walkways. That was in response of a great suggestion by one of the planning board members. So, we wanted to make sure that the language, you know, spoke about, you know, designing to reduce the visibility from the public way or walkway. You know, there could be, and I feel like this provides enough language for the boards to determine, you know, whatever the proposal is, does that, does that reduce the visibility enough? So, and then the next highlighted area is, "Non-residential uses are encouraged to occupy as much as the first or ground floor as feasible, and are also permitted on upper floors for sloping lots or lots with frontage on more than one right-of-way. The permit granting authority shall determine which floor of the building contains the non-residential or parking uses." I believe this was presented in previous meetings, and this is to provide flexibility for the boards that are dealing with sloping lots where there's going to be grading issues or at corner lots. And so, it'd be giving the board discretion of, you know, would they consider the first or ground floor for those uses. And this section just gets into what, you know, what are the non-residential uses? It could be retail, business, institutional, government, public service, customer service, office, or similar uses, and lawful accessory uses allowed in the zoning district. For the purposes of this definition, hotels, motels, and inns under Section 3.327 shall be considered non-residential uses. And then, this next subsection, it talks about parking shall be, shall be the place used for, parking shall be the space used for parking for vehicles, bicycles, and other modes, and internal drive aisle and walkways. And I believe you have reviewed this before. Yep.
Chris.
I just wanted to note that the text in black here is new text, and sometimes we, you know, put our, it's all, it's all a definition that we're proposing to add to Section 12 of the zoning bylaw, which is all about definitions. So, the changes here in green are changes from maybe the last time we met with you. We wanted to make sure that you knew the changes. But we're taking, we're essentially taking the definition of mixed-use buildings out of the category, the use category chart, and we're putting it into the definition section of the zoning bylaw. So, all the black language is going to be new, and the green language is very new. Okay? Does that make sense? Okay.
Okay. So, I'm going to go back. So, we just reviewed the definition under Article 12, the proposed definition. And so, if we go back here, at the beginning of the document, we still are proposing to maintain the language regarding a management plan, which is, you know, required of both the planning board special permit and site plan review, as well as the ZBA permits as well, but we felt that we could keep it in the section if folks feel that it, that is necessary. This, these two paragraphs or sections here that are in red and struck through, we're, we are combining this, this condition, which was combined with the management, would be removed and replaced with new conditions. And so, we'll can scroll down here to where, where this sort of information that is struck through is now rewritten entirely. And so, we can scroll down to the bottom of the document where new standards and conditions in Section 3.325 in the use chart would be provided. And so, as I had mentioned before, and I know that Nate has talked about the project open space proposal, which would be required, open space provided in front or along the side of a mixed-use building in areas customarily used by occupants and visitors, and calculated as a minimum of 10% of the building footprint, including areas under overhanging upper floors. Project open space shall include areas of, for occupants and visitors of the building in sight. We struck through public and inserted occupants and visitors largely because as a private owner, they have the legal right to exclude members of the public. So, this would be the more, you know, this would be the accurate way. We're not saying that public can't go there, and we would hope that, you know, developers are encouraging members of the public to visit their sites and be patrons of their stores and visit and et cetera. But that would be the more sort of legally correct way of phrasing that. Public open space shall include landscaping, sidewalks, plazas, and sitting areas. Project open space shall be provided in areas that are not parking areas, driveways, HVAC, and utility areas, service areas, or unusable slope area. An applicant may request to waive or modify this provision through a special permit with the permit granting authority for compelling reasons of safety, aesthetics, and site design. And this paragraph gets into that there would be a requirement to provide outdoor amenities, and that outdoor amenities may include benches, seating walls, and planters, and should be carefully located so as to not interfere with the continuity of the sidewalk and the visual connection to interior uses. And this didn't change either from last time, which is about the bedroom count. We cleaned up that language, which is to say, no more than 50% of the total number of dwelling units shall have the same bedroom count, with the exception of a mixed-use building containing less than five dwelling units. The special permit granting authority may waive or modify this requirement for projects in which all dwelling units provided are affordable. And we struck through, removed the information, the language about parking, and we are instead addressing parking in Article 7, which is specifically on parking. So, and we are proposing that this is unchanged as well, about, talking about that the permit granting authority shall apply the design review provisions in the bylaw. And if they, you know, if the permit granting authority so chooses, they could ask the design review board to review the project and provide recommendations. And I believe those, let me just go through this. I believe those are all the changes, but we'll just, yes, I think that's it. So, questions, comments?
Doug.
Okay. Thanks, Maureen. All right. I'm a little surprised that CRC thinks this is ready for town council, but, so I might these comments for the recording and for posterity. 12.34, the increase from, I think it was 40 or 50% to 60% seems a little bit counter to what I thought was one of the problems with the mixed-use definition, which has resulted in several buildings that had only a token amount of retail in them. And so, 60%, obviously, that's not 80%, but I thought we were trying to encourage more retail in these buildings, so I'm surprised to see a change this late that reduces the amount of retail or commercial space in these buildings. In addition, in that section, it's the last sentence where the residential uses and parking on the first or ground floor shall be at the rear of the building. I, there's sort of a, there's a fairly common historical precedent for having a pair of one or two doors that lead past the residential area and then up into the building to access with where the doors are on the front of the building. So, would this sentence preclude having a door that enters, that provides access to residential units being on the front of the building, on the sidewalk? I'm looking at 12.34 at the bottom of the first page. There. Shall be at the rear of the building and designed to reduce visibility. I mean, if I live in a building that has retail on the front, you know, at the ground level, and I live upstairs, and I, you know, am not parking in the back, maybe I want to come in and out, and my visitors want to come in and out, a front door on the front of the building. So, it's unclear to me whether this would preclude that, and I think that would be helpful to have that, oh, Kristin's got her hand up.
Hey, Chris.
So, we didn't mean to preclude having entrances to the residential uses on the front of the building. We meant to preclude having actual residential units on the front of the first floor. So, maybe the language needs to be clarified, and-
There was, there was a point where, somewhere in here where you were sort of defining residential use, and it included stairs and hallways and everything associated with the residential use. So, that looked like a problem.
So, that, yes, and so, we need to think of a way of phrasing that so it isn't a problem.
Okay. Moving on, 12.3.41. Second sentence, parking, including parking designed for bicycles. Well, I mean, I guess the question, I marked up this section, but is it okay to have bike parking in the front of a building?
We currently allow it in most or all uses, so, I mean, I guess it would be at the discretion of the board. Is it prohibited in the zoning bylaw? No, it's not.
Back to 12.34, "The residential uses and parking on the first or ground floor shall be at the rear of the building." So, if I show up at, you know, if I want to lock my bike and go in and shop, I got to go around to the back and find it?
I will say that bicycle, there is a section on bicycle parking, which is separate than Article 7, which is parking, so, but we can certainly-
Okay, well, so, okay, the 12.342, this is, actually, my comment was similar to what I was just talking about, where this is where residential and non-residential uses shall also include the incidental spaces. So, that's what made me think, gee, I can't have an entrance on the front of the building to residential use. And I guess it also, you know, I mean, it so happens, we're looking at East 11, or 11 East Pleasant Street lately, which needs to have a residential stairwell close to the front of the building, just because of the shape of the building. And I would hope you'd be allowed to have that stairwell, you know, somewhere, and have it perhaps exit onto the front, you know, maybe with blank, sorry, blank doors, but, you know, I'd hate to sort of screw up the ability to have residential use on the entire upper floor because I can't put a stair that comes down to the first floor. Then, moving to your new standards and conditions, the first paragraph, I think the longer I've looked and heard and thought about this open space idea, the less I'm on board. I don't really understand, at least in the commercial district, the desire for open space in what is essentially an urban district. And I know that given different lot sizes, you could have a 50,000-square-foot footprint next to a 5,000-square-foot footprint, in which case, the open space in front of the big building has to be a lot farther back than the open space in front of the little building. So, it's going to create a more haphazard street edge. Partly, this comment was inspired by Janet Keller, who sent us a package on June 2nd that included a bunch of pictures. And the pictures she and many other people have included for us when they make comments are the blocks that front the common, which are absolutely uniform, on the west side, you know, where A.J. Hastings is, and on the, I guess it's the north side of the common that face the town hall. You know, all of those street edges are absolutely consistent. So, the approach of you, or the strategy of using open space seems unlikely to create a uniform street edge, and I would prefer to have us basically dictate, you know, whether it's different in every one of these zones, you know, what the front setback needs to be. That, you know, let's just tell them. Okay, and then, at the last of the first paragraph there, "We are allowed to waive or modify this provision through special permit for compelling reasons of safety, aesthetics, and site design." Compelling feels like a kind of an arbitrary thing, and if it's really up to us or our successors to just decide, we think you should, we should waive it, why not just take that word out? The next paragraph.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, the one that starts, "Outdoor amenities. The developer shall be provided to provide, required to provide outdoor amenities." Can those outdoor amenities be in the public right-of-way? If they're, you know, if we have this setback, this open space, and, you know, do, do all the amenities have to be within their property line? And then, the next line, you know, part, this is part of my issue with some of these, this outdoor space requirement, benches, sitting walls, and planters. Well, if I'm a retail merchant and I want people to walk by my storefront display with, you know, a beautiful dress in it that I might get somebody to come in, I don't want to set it back from the street and put sidewalk or benches, sitting walls, and planters between me and my viewer. I want them to be up close and personal with what I'm trying to sell. So, I think these sort of lend themselves toward starting to interfere with, with the visual connection of the pedestrian with the retail display space. Next paragraph, bedroom count. I'll just say that I'm disappointed that my previous comment to do it 50% plus one doesn't show up here. Sure.
I would like to call in Rob Mora to address that question because we did discuss it. We certainly took your comments seriously, but we felt that we weren't going to include that, and Rob has a better handle on exactly why.
Hi, I'm not sure I have a good reason for you why, but we did discuss it at length, and ultimately, we felt that encouraging a greater mix of unit types wasn't a bad thing. So, that's how we ended that discussion, thinking that nine-unit example that you provided, that that outlying unit could be a studio apartment or a three-bedroom apartment, and that would be just fine.
Well, you know, I've come around to wondering whether I regret my original comment that you needed a total, that the unit, that was based, now, now the, the unit mix is based on the number of bedrooms, whereas your original language was the size. And I complained that that was art, kind of arbitrary, and there'd be, you know, maybe- that was art, kind of arbitrary, and there'd be, you know, maybe we should use unit, number of bedrooms instead. But I'm now thinking about things like eight, the eight, you know, you have to have a certain number of accessible units, and those typically take up a little larger footprint. So, you know, you might have a couple of floors where you do the required ADA units, and then on the upper floors, you may want to, you know, add a bedroom or something. So it just felt like, I guess part of it is, it seems like this was going to lend or could easily lead people to have to have three different one-bedroom, you know, studio one and two, or one, two, and three, and for, particularly for the smaller unit, the smaller developments, say, under 10, you know, units. It just feels like they may end up losing a, losing a unit because they're not, there's no efficient way to get that third unit type.
Okay.
So, okay, I don't know. My la, my last comment was really a question for Tom, because Tom is on the design review board, and so the last paragraph in this, you know, introduces the requirement to use the DRB standards for our review. So I wanted to just ask, have you found those standards to be restrictive in terms of the architectural expression, and whether, you know, just kind of, is, is this okay? Or are we kind of creating a problem?
I, I don't necessarily think we're creating a problem. I think we're just creating points of discussion. So to clarify, we haven't used the full bullet points of each item on a particular project yet in our discussion, so we haven't gone through a sort of roll call of each of the items. So we haven't really had a debate on every single point just yet during my tenure, but we do use it as a reference all the time when, when projects come up and we're constantly reviewing it. And I think the nature of it is still pretty open-ended, right? It's how does one interpret this in terms of its context, right? So that is an aesthetic judgment that we would make as a committee, and I think that DRB would make the same, have the same kind of discussion that we would have here on the zoning board. So I believe it, I believe it's, it allows us to look at them without being really restrictive, but it forces us to discuss them and debate for the most part. And some of them, some of them can be restrictive, but I don't think that it's going to affect our judgment.
Thanks, Tom, and no, no additional comments.
And then I, I would just add that the, you know, the town, I believe, has secured money to hire a design consultant to look at design standards, so I would anticipate that the design standards and principles would be reviewed and possibly updated to, to reflect any, you know, needed changes.
Thank you, Doug. Those are very good, and I agree with, with most of them, if not all, your points, excellent. But I'm, I'm wondering, oh, Maria, and then Janet. Well, I was just wondering if, if, it sounds like the BG needs something different from a, from a MUB perspective versus the other...
I mean, I think there's different ways to approach it. I mean, in terms of, you know, in the BG district, in the BG zoning district, that maybe there's more, I'll, I'm going to conjecture what you're thinking. Maybe there's more, maybe it's more important that we want a uniform street edge.
Yeah.
And that, you know, if, when we get out into the village centers, everything is more, already sort of scattered and spread out, and there's less opportunity or to create a uniform edge, and it really matters less when you, if you do.
Yeah.
I mean, I think I could follow that, you know, I mean...
Great, thank you.
But, you know, it's just how do you write it so that it works in one place versus another? I mean, that, you guys think about that a lot more than we do.
So Maria, then Janet?
Doug, maybe the, the, all, all of the ones that fell under the problematic issue of residential uses being in public, maybe it just needs to be changed to residential units should not be in, on the first floor in view of public, because that's basically what you're trying to do, is keep the actual units not visible from the public way. All the stuff like entries, bike storage, stairs, they can be visible, right? So I think that might cover all the, the items you had mentioned about that. I agree. I think the BG, you know, I, I'm glad you finally touched on that, because I'm kind of torn about like, you know, amenities and open space where in the BG property is so valuable and so scarce that, that's why there's always this, this conflict with parking and buildings. It's like we're giving up such valuable real estate to not building, and so that, that's maybe, you know, I don't know how to do that for this, but perhaps, you know, you're trying to get something passed, and kind of like other things we've passed, we've said, well, we could test it, see if it works, and if it doesn't, we can change it. I remember Nate saying that, and kind of, you know, being incredulous about, because it takes us so long to change anything or do anything, so, but maybe just as a way to move forward, for the open space, it's something like, you know, in the BG, it's, there's more of a, sort of, a way to evaluate it parcel by parcel, rather than saying, you know, there's no way to budge on this 10% open space, because I, I think it's a nice idea in some instances, but again, I just feel like downtown is such valuable, prime real estate. And then the other issue was the, the 60%, was that, you said you'd studied some mixed-use buildings and found that 60 matched, so those were, you were saying, I forget which one you said, were you using them as, you know, this is not what we want to do, we want more retail than this, or were you saying, this is what has been approved, let's keep that, and that's where you got the 60%?
So this is the section that Maria is talking about. So what this is saying is that, you know, there could, there would be a maximum amount allowed on the first or ground floor would be residential uses, and a minimum of 40% for non-residential, so retail, office, commercial spaces. And, you know, after looking at examples in town such as One Drive South, which is a mixed-use building, and Kendrick Place, another one, you know, we, we sort of see these, that ratio, and I think there is just sort of this kind of concern with this state of retail, to be honest, and, and online retailers, and the feasibility of added retail in downtown. It's, it's a scary reality, and so I think that we're, we came up with this as a sort of compromise with acknowledging the, the state of, of commercial and retail.
Chris?
Right now, we don't have any standard at all, so we're ending up with mixed use that has like 200 square feet of something that's non-residential, and so we want to put something in place that says, you know, this, this has to have some legitimate retailer commercial space. And we're also trying to be realistic with regard to what Maureen just said, acknowledging the fact that retail is not necessarily thriving at this time. So we felt that 40% was reasonable, and when we looked at the buildings that have been designed so far, that seems to be about right. It's probably not perfect, but again, you know, we can change it, even though it might take us five years to change it, but anyway.
Great. Janet?
I would like the board to talk about this issue a lot, about the percentage, because the purpose of the mixed-use buildings, I mean, they, in exchange for, you know, the purpose, as I understand, the purpose of the mixed use was to make sure that the first floor is retail, you know, keep the commercial aspect of the BG, but also, you know, put some economic strength into the building too and allow retail. And that, when, when this was adopted by town meeting, it was a bonanza of density, right? You can only put 24 units into a parking, into an apartment building, but in a mixed-use building, there's no limit to the number of units you can do, except for your square footage. And so the exchange is, yeah, you get, we're going to bring retail, we're going to bring residential downtown into the village centers. You get to, there's no cap on how many units, just whatever the square footage is and the minimums, but the first floor is going to be commercial, it could be professional, it could be offices, it could be anything. So I think that's like the grand bargain, and we've gone from that idea to one, 200 square foot office. And in the planning department, the planning board came to town meeting, and they wanted to have a minimum of 60% of retail, commercial, or professional. And so we've gone from that to, I don't even see a minimum requirement of what has to be retail. So it seems to me that, I just, I don't think we should, I think we should stay with the 60%, limit the residential to 40%. You know, that was a good idea, you know, a few years ago, it's a good idea today. If you think that retail is dead, go to Hadley, because they've added like 40 or 50 stores on Route 9 in the last five or 10 years. They may be franchise, you know, they may be franchises, but Hadley seems to really be thriving with retail, and we have lost so much retail space downtown by the new buildings that we're sort of, we're sort of, you know, the new buildings are killing retail and then saying, oh, retail is dead, and we need that space. The purpose of the BG district is business, commercial, retail, and, you know, so the residential stuff is good, we need that, but let's not eliminate what the downtown really needs, which is space for small shops or even, you know, a gap or whatever. So I think, I feel really strongly that we need to, we need more, less residential space on the first floor, and to fix us a, a specific percentage of what the retail space is. And I would say, let's stick with 60%. It was a good idea a bunch of years ago. The pandemic is crummy, but it's temporary, you know, I mean, America is bouncing back and shopping more than ever. You know, if we had some more retail spaces downtown, we'd have more stores, and Hadley builds a building for no, you know, you go along, and there's this building with four storefronts, and within a year, it's filled with small shops, and it could even be a Coral Institute, you know, I mean, just, if they build it, people come, you know? And so I think we shouldn't abandon the basic premise and say, well, if we look around, 200 square feet, this, that, I mean, that's actually what's going wrong, let's not reinforce it in the bylaw. So I feel, I feel like we should talk about this. I agree with Doug, I don't think this is ready to go to the town council. I also think the other two are really not ready at all, but, so I think this is worth a discussion.
I've got a question. Does anyone have a handle on lease rates in Hadley versus what is being offered, you know, in downtown Amherst? Because I, I got a feeling that it's expensive in downtown Amherst, but I don't know that for sure, but I don't know, anyone knows that? But I, I got a feeling Hadley with more land, it's just, they're able to offer more affordable lease rates.
I mean, I think, I think the other condition is parking, right? I mean, you can, you pull up, there's 6,000 parking spots, then you can go to Chipotle and then go home, and, and I think that, you know, that's another factor we're dealing with too, in terms of how do we get people downtown? So I don't think just opening shops or putting in vacant shops is going to actually activate the downtown. You know, I think we need to solve some of the bigger problems that are systemic within town, and then, and then maybe we have the opportunity to put a 60% retail on a first floor and invite a gap in, but a gap's not going to pop, you know, a shop in downtown if there's not enough parking and there's not enough additional shopping and activation downtown. So, so I think, you know, there, there has to be some other combination that comes from, from the town to commit to, you know, finding ways to activate the businesses downtown, isn't just adding more retail space, because there's retail space that's just vacant. So it's not that it's not there, it's just that it's really expensive and it's really hard to get to.
But these buildings have removed 12 shops, and they're not being replaced. I mean, those, those businesses didn't all close, they went to different places, so I think that we need to maintain the space. You know, it could be, it could be a jamboree, it could be a clay shop for, you know, little kids, but there's, if there are no physical spaces, you know, and our downtown isn't filled with empty shops, you know, we, we do better than Northampton on that, but we have fewer and fewer spaces, and then we say retail is dead, and like, well, you just moved 12 businesses out, you know?
Doug?
One of the, one of the examples that I think of when I think about the transition of retail in this town is what happened in Harvard Square when the red line got extended. Harvard Square went from being essentially, you know, the carriage shops to being Kendrick Place and One East Pleasant, you know, new, modern, fully accessible buildings and much higher rents. And everybody who was the quirky, idiosyncratic mom-and-pop stores in Harvard Square that everybody loved, who had gone to school there and, or hung out there, they all moved to Central Square. And so similarly, you know, that's, that, that does seem to be what happens when you, when you, you know, I, I don't have very much experience with the retail rent. I, I think I had heard at one point that the, the spaces like in Kendrick Place and similar were renting for in the mid $30 a square foot per year, and that's pretty high for, for everything else in the area. You know, you can probably get in the teens down in South Amherst or in, you know, Belcher Town. So it's, it could be twice, you know, what rents are elsewhere. So those, the people that are building new buildings, they're either hoping that they can attract somebody who will pay those rents, or at some point, they'll decide, I need to bring my rent down just so I have somebody in there, and I'm getting something. But they're not hungry enough yet, you know?
I mean, I think the same pattern happened in Hollyoak too, you know, when the mall went in, the downtown thriving shopping strips in downtown Hollyoak just disappeared. Now it's just, there's a lot of vacancy in that, as a shopping district that it once was because of the convenience of the mall, right? And so what we have in Hadley is this gravity of shopping that is taking people away. And I do think that there would be space for that mom-and-pop, but I think Doug's right in that, you know, the cost of just, you know, opening a trinket shop downtown is not going to pay your rent, you know, you're not going to be able to cover that. And so I think, I think there's just, I think there's a lot of factors to consider here, and it's not just available retail space. I think there are patterns across the country that, you know, we're suffering a similar kind of system.
Can I also say, the last time I went to the malls in Hadley, you know, those, the quality of those stores has gone down. There's fewer national chains, whether you like them or not, but there's more of the mom-and-pop trinket shops, I guess if you want to call, use that term, in the mall, and then there's some, there's more empty storefronts. So, you know, maybe the, maybe the pendulum will swing back, but right now, it's all going to Amazon.
Maria?
So are, are we thinking that the 60 is good then? Now we're thinking smaller is fine, because even the developer from Archipelago was saying, you know, when we tried to push back and increase his first-floor retail, he was saying he, they did a lot of market studies, and this seemed like the smaller footprint was the right size for this trend that he's seeing. So, I mean, just to help move this forward, I was just wondering if that's, are we coming around to just accepting that particular item as is?
Andrew?
Is it answered? Oh, sorry. Does, who, does it need to be answered? Is that a comment, a question?
Oh, discussion.
A discussion, all right. Who wants to, all right, Doug?
Well, I'm, I, I, you know, if that stays in there at 60%, I mean, I'm not going to oppose this on that basis.
Chris, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to say, we don't have to bring this to town council on June 28th. We bring it when it's ready. So town, CRC thought it was ready. So town, CRC thought it was ready. If you don't think it's ready, then maybe you need one more go around with it. So, you know, I think you're bringing up some good questions and comments. And so let's, let's keep it open and not feel pressured to bring this to town council on June 28th if it's not ready.
So Andrew, then Janet?
Yeah, I, I'm happy to hear you say that, because I, I agree after hearing all this comments, all of these comments, that it does seem like it's a little premature. You know, when I, I first saw the 60%, one of the things that had popped in my mind was that, you know, given the frontage can't have residential, the number would actually be higher. Right? It's not like you just take the space and cut it 60, 40. The front would, would by definition have to include resident, or exclude residential. And to the extent that they have to be viable, that could take up a fair amount of the footprint. So maybe in practice, we end up being more, I definitely think it needs to be more. More retail. Yeah, I mean, to me, that's like, that's, that's what's really killing downtown. Like we've got, we've, and we've chatted about this, Jack, MassMutual, like, that's, that's a flagship retail corner and it's, it's killing it. Like it's, it's, it's killed that, that corner. That could be something that's really special and it's just, it's not a vibrant public use. Just some comments I'll share relative to sort of the state of retail and sort of malls and so forth is that what, what folks have tried to do to combat the Amazons is really differentiate on experience. And so like you see retailers doing that, but then also the developers are doing that as well. You've got an upper echelon of, of malls which are actually doing very well. And they have like full occupancy. And of the malls we have in Hadley, or, you know, the old mall, the new mall, whatever, one developer where the Whole Foods is, WS, is, is one of those great developers that are able to get in good tenants. Pyramid, the other side of the street where the Target is, is not. And they've not been able to bring in retailers. They're trying to differentiate with, by bringing in like those experience types of things, like the go-kart racing and the, the, you know, the, the escape rooms. And you see that in, in Holyoke as well, it's the same, it's the same developer. So you've got a, you've got a, a desire to try to differentiate with that experience. And I think that that's, that could be an advantage that we have in Amherst in that. It's, it's different by nature in that it's pedestrian, we've got some quirky aspects to it. Knowing that people who are going, you know, there's still an interest in having a retail experience. I'm hopeful that, you know, there's a, there's a positive side to this. So I, with that in mind, I would love to see more allocation for, for retail specifically, not just non-residential use. Thanks.
Thank you. Johanna? Oh, are you, okay.
Thanks so much. I'm trying to figure out just whether, it seems like Doug raised a couple of things, so the, the, but it seemed, they don't seem insurmountable to me to keep moving this forward. So the residential uses, I think we thought switching that to units fixes that concern. The 10% open space, you know, when I look at the examples that were provided, I'm like, okay, that could work. And there's a waiver provision. So a thoughtful developer who's thoughtful about the streetscape would ask for that and then the body would potentially grant it. And so to me, the big sticking point is this, you know, 60% residential use or parking. And is that too much? I'm not, we're not going to fix Amherst's retail economy with one policy in our zoning bylaw. Like, the way that I keep thinking about it is, office space in these new buildings and retail space in these new buildings is going to be more expensive, right? They're, they're just nicer spaces. I mean, I was a tenant in the carriage shop for years and it was cheap and there was a reason it was cheap. And you're just not going to get that affordability in a brand new building. So, you know, there's part of me that feels like if what we're trying to do is encourage retail downtown, maybe the town needs to figure out some way to subsidize local, small businesses or something like that. So that, we're not trying to do everything with our zoning policy, but we actually put in place incentives for the things that we want. So, you know, I'm interested in talking a little bit more about the 60% tonight and seeing if we can get to a place where we can move it forward.
Thank you, Johanna. Janet?
So I did have other things to say, but I do think this is a really important threshold issue. Because also when I read this, I don't see any guarantee of any percentage of retail space. So it's saying you could do only 63, 60% residential and affiliated. And then it, it seems possible, as, as this came up in town meeting, like it could just be an ATM, right? You could just have an ATM and, you know, I don't know, whatever, they could, you know, a gumball machine or, you know, sandwich, you know, you know, whatever, it could be anything. There's no requirement of any, you know, and the purpose of mixed use, what, the purpose of the BG is commerce and getting people to come in and spend their money. And we've added this big residential incentive. It's obviously extremely lucrative to the developers, because I can't even, you know, look, look what they're getting per square foot for residential space. So I think they could get less on the, on the ground floor. And, because they get a big boon, they don't have to buy parking, they don't have to do affordable housing. You know, it's like they've gotten a lot, we, you know, we gave away too much maybe without requiring stuff. And this is a moment where we could sort of say, let's have a storefront, like, so we have a Hastings and we have a coffee shop. And those businesses are doing really well and people want to be there and they want to go there. When I go around New England, you know, New England is pretty cool. Burlington, Vermont has tons of small retail shops and also some big, you know, big, very expensive national brands. Davis Square is full of funky places. Arlington, Mass, they have a huge apartment building they put in. That supported a lot of retail. Province Town is doing well, I can report directly. So I think we should not give up on retail and just create space for them. We have, you know, Eleven East Pleasant shut down three businesses plus the pub. They were all functioning, you know, maybe at a low level, but I'm sure those were important businesses. So we can't keep on shutting down these businesses and then saying there's no, you know, retail is dead. And the only spaces are very small and very expensive now. Like, that's not the direction we should head in. The other thing is, I, I understand what, I like the idea of the public open space or the project open space. But I do keep on wondering if a setback is just what we need, because it will create the physical space for, you know, the benches probably would likely be on town land, you know. Unless you're kind of a Henyon guy, you like people hanging out and looking at your succulents and stuff. But, um, you know, but all those things you love about Amherst and that's what draws you to it. But maybe a setback would be an easier solution specifically for the BG, I don't know.
So I have a question for Rob. What is the vacancy rate now in downtown for the commercial spaces on the first floor? It seems, I mean, there's some restaurants I know.
We're still trying to get a, a good handle on that. It's really unknown. We do have, you know, several, one indicator are alcohol licenses. So we have several licenses that have not been renewed or are being taken back by the license commissioners for non-use or not having the, the location secured by losing a lease or whatever the case may be. So we're still trying to get a handle on that, both for residential occupancy and the rental units across town and, and downtown and the commercial spaces.
Doug?
I think the, the question of requiring specifically a percentage of retail had come up in one conversation before. And I don't remember who it was that said this, but I think there was a reluctance to try to dictate to, specifically to the landlord on what filled the non-residential space. You know, I'd, I'd be happy to see a Realtor's office where, you know, they, they paste all the listings in the front window and as I walk by, I can say, oh, I'm visiting town. Gee, how much would it cost for me to move here? You know, I do that when I go on vacation. So, you know, a Realtor's office, you know, an architect's office, you could put your models and drawings in the front window. Those aren't retail. And so I'd, I'd hate to, I mean, I think, I'm fine with just saying 60% maximum, you know, you know, specifying how much has to be non-residential. I think that's fine. And I, I guess I am, I share the concern about being too specific that you have to have a space reserved for walk-in consumer retail when that just may not be viable in the market right, right then.
Yeah, good point, Doug. Chris?
So I just wanted to confirm that we're talking about 40% non-residential, right? So. What, what the, what the proposal currently says is that we would have 40% of non-residential and it's not waivable. And so, you know, 60% could be residential or parking. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was clear on that. And I know that Janet is pushing that number to be higher, but the proposal today is that 40% would be non-residential.
Yeah, I'm trying to reinstate the, the last time we went, you know, the last mixed use revision was 60% was, was non-residential. And they had that, I think they were just changing the bedroom count and then they were doing the, 60% was non-residential or no more than 40% was residential. And then the objection was something about looking at parking and all that stuff. So that almost went through and I wish now it had, you know. So I'm talking about the opposite of what you're saying.
I've been tinkering with the language in this section, which can be reflected in maybe purple lettering. How do folks feel about, I guess regardless of the percentage of what that specifically is? But it's, it's showing here 60% for residential use with a minimum of 40% of non-residential use for the first or ground floor? Maria's saying maybe 50/50? Oh, Janet, sorry, sorry.
I have a, a general question about the reference to ends. But it's motels, hotels, ends would be allowed as part of that, uh, commercial use? And I'm just wondering, you know, so that you, you could have people, you know, living, or not living, but residing on the first floor. And is that a good thing, you know, in the front of the building? Is that, is that something that, you know, anyone's concerned about? I like the idea of maybe.
A boutique hotel or something, yeah.
Yeah, having a little bed and breakfast on the first floor sort of thing. But not a major point, but.
I'm not going to worry about that, because you've got your reception and your bar and your function rooms are going to take up the first floor. And, 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 you know, probably your dining room with your kitchen. And so, I mean, unless, I mean, nope, I, I can't believe anybody who runs a hotel would actually do that to a customer is put them on the first floor, you know. It just feels like it's so, such a stretch that I'm, I'm not worried about it.
Yeah. Chris?
So I'm wondering, it's getting towards 10 o'clock. And I'm wondering, we also wanted to talk about apartments and parking. But maybe we're not going to get there tonight. And do we want to think about adding a meeting somewhere or going back to this on? The next two meetings you have are June 30th, where you're going to be tackling the new building downtown. New mixed use building with no mixed use building standards, none of this. And then July 7th is getting booked up with things. It's got a zoning bylaw hearing to rezone the parking lot behind CVS. It's got a proposal to put in.
That is a public hearing?
That is something that's been, it didn't have to come through you. It came from town council down to the planning board and the CRC with the request that you all hold public hearings. So it didn't have to bubble up from the.
Do we have to hold it that quickly?
Yeah, the town council has asked us to hold it.
So we have like 90 days normally though, right? Is that right?
The town council has 90 days in which to vote.
We have 45, right, or something? I can't remember.
When did they refer it? They referred it back in the beginning of May, I think May 3rd or something like that. So this is coming down the track. So anyway, you have that, you have Greenfield Savings Bank proposing an ATM at New Market Center. And there's maybe one other thing which would be, oh yeah, Chapter 61A removal request on a property up in North Amherst. So those are three things that you have on July 7th. But you could bring this back on July 7th if you wanted to. Do we have anything else on July 7th?
Not moving, but this has all been changing, I've been furious.
Is next week too soon to?
Next week, we could have a meeting next week and talk about this if people are available. That would be the 20, oh, I'm, actually, I'm going to a district meeting that night, so I wouldn't be here. And Pam's on vacation.
We could seize control.
Any opinions? How late to go tonight?
I don't want to go past that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, this, the mixed use building has just generated a lot of discussion and interest, as you can see. So I guess we, we're not going to finish tonight, I guess, is what's going to happen, so. Yeah.
What do Rob and Maureen think of the possibility of coming back on July 7th to talk about mixed use buildings, apartments, and parking? Does that make sense?
Sure.
Yeah, fine with me, Chris, on the projects that you listed off, was the Bay Road parking lot in there? And, and so that's going to be on one of those dates as well, the 30?
I think that's going to be on August 4th.
Oh, that's out in August, okay. Okay.
So are we, are we wrapping up?
Well, I guess that's what I'm, I'm saying, I think it's getting late and there are so many unresolved issues.
Yeah.
The planning department can take what you've said tonight and go back and work on these things and bring you back something that would be more, you know, that you would perhaps go forward.
Yeah, alright.
And I don't think that we want to start apartments and parking now, in my opinion.
What, what was that, Chris?
I think, in my opinion, I don't think we want to start apartments and parking now.
Right, correct, alright. I think that's the general feeling of the board. Should we have public comment on what we've discussed so far? Yes, Johanna?
I was just thinking, while we're on scheduling, I would just be curious to hear Chris's advice about the, what we have planned for July 7th and whether we should be thinking about adding a meeting in July, just so we can make sure we got through everything. Talking about that now, I'd just be curious to hear your thoughts.
You could add a meeting on July 14th, because you have one on the 7th and the 21st. So if you wanted to add a meeting on July 14th.
That sounds prudent.
My colleagues, are you going to be in town?
I'm available.
Pardon me? Yep, yes, I think, you know, everyone raise a hand if they're available. Good, good. For the 14th, adding the 14th, July 14th. Yes. Yeah, as a, as a safety buffer. Are you good?
I, I was wondering if we could maybe get some information of like what percentages other towns do in terms of retailer, you know, not retail, but residential and non-residential. And like pick cool towns that have.
And like pick cool towns that have thriving downtowns.
So Doug, how are, how are you on the 14th?
I'm fine.
Okay, Janet? And Maria?
I don't know if you remember Jack, I used to go away for almost the entire summer, but what I can do is read things and send my comments.
Okay.
But I think this year we might be going for a shorter amount of time, so hopefully I won't miss too much of July and August like I used to.
Well, we have to do a straw poll on Zoom of whether we're going to do Zoom or not moving forward, so I mean, that.
We're six hours ahead, so it'll be midnight where I am.
Oh, okay. Across the pond. Yeah.
We'll have a meeting on July 7th focused on these things that I listed and we'll have another meeting on July 14th focused on zoning, right?
Okay. So public comment on what we've discussed is, Pam?
Oh, wait, wait, yeah, sure.
Hi, Pam Rooney, 42 Cottage Street. I, as written, I would, I would also strongly advocate for a greater percentage of non-residential space in the building. And I think people have said this tonight, the difference between this and an apartment is the fact that, that there is this added benefit to our town center that has the commercial aspect to it. A very standard business model and maybe, maybe not in the Amherst, but in, in other cities. The business model is that, that the leases are subsidized for the, for the commercial space through the residential. The residential typically brings in more money and the subsidy of that ground floor allows for the kinds of businesses that can, that could afford that less expensive space. I think one of the, one of the really wonderful things might be is if you have, if you have space, it doesn't have to be one tenant, it could be micro businesses and be a really exciting space for people to visit with three or four or five different little shops within it. I guess the, the bottom line is if the space isn't created, then it simply can't be available to any of these opportunities. There was a little bit of discussion about the open space and I think what many of the, even if a building is, appears to be sort of up close and personal, if you think of much of North Pleasant Street, even on the east side of North Pleasant Street, there is, there is the town amenity space with benches and trees, there is the eight or nine-foot sidewalk, and then there is actually often some space even along the Tibetan Restaurant and things like that, there is additional space to the front of the building, which is, it's where people can be and hang out and, and not interfere with pedestrian traffic on the sidewalk itself. And I think that's, that additional space is what makes sort of the Henyon, the Henyon area, the, the share area much more vibrant because there's, it could be, it could be some outdoor, you know, movable chairs or something, but it's the opportunity for people to pause off of the sidewalk and gather. So it's not going to get decided tonight, but consideration of some sort of project open space, either to the benefit of passersby or to the residents, heaven forbid, of the building itself, I think still makes a little sense. So think about it and look at different opportunities and examples downtown where that adds to the vibrancy of the town rather than detracts from it.
Thank you. All right, so I see no other hints and so that concludes our, our discussion on, on the MEV and we will take up the zoning, like as you said, on the 14th of July. Do we have time to go through the rest of the agenda? Okay, let's, let's zoom through it, I guess, so. Old business? All right. And new business, not reasonably anticipated? None, okay. Form? Yes, yeah, I was going, I was, I was going to mention that, so we can discuss that now. How are people feeling about conducting our future meetings for the foreseeable future on Zoom? Andrew?
I'd like to, is it possible to do a hybrid? I mean, is it like, because I actually really enjoy, this is the first time I've been in one of these and even if it's like two or three folks, you know, we've got monitors here, we've got cameras, I wasn't sure if that's viable, I would vote for that, but if not, I would absolutely vote for Zoom.
Yeah, I, personally, I see a hybrid for at least getting the, the public in, you know, but I, I do, this is great to see everyone, but I do think there's, the efficiency of a Zoom meeting are, are large. Doug?
Well, I, I share the pleasure of being in your physical presence, but I also think it's, I think it's important for us to be able to sit and be face-to-face with the people who comment. You know, the, the public comment we've gotten tonight, I've been struck by just how immediate and more impactful it felt as I listened to it as opposed to how it's come across on the little Hollywood square on Zoom. You know, and so I would hate for us to be on Zoom long-term. I think during this transition period, if it makes more sense to stay on Zoom, that's fine, you know, but I think long-term, I don't, I, I mean, I'm reminded of, I think it was something in the Gazette about the district court and how it had gone to Zoom and, and, but the attorneys were making the point that, you know, the judge needs to see the plaintiff and, you know, read their body language and all of that stuff. And, you know, we're not judges, but we're not entirely different in needing a human relationship, so.
Chris?
So I wanted to say that it's unclear exactly how we're going to do this going forward, that the governor signed legislation today to allow us to continue having meetings via Zoom. That also allows us to meet in person or it allows us to have hybrid meetings. Our problem with hybrid meetings is that we don't have enough IT staff to go around. So for right now, there's been a decision made that the IT staff will support the town council and its committees, and if they decide to hold their meetings as a hybrid model, IT is ready to serve them. It's questionable, although it possible, that they would be able to support the planning board because the planning board is one of the boards that's considered to be really, you know, very important for the town to operate. So, but that's kind of a developing conversation and we don't really have the answer to that yet. So I would say probably for the next, for the, for the immediate future, you would either have to choose having meetings in public or having meetings on Zoom. Eventually, you might be able to do the hybrid model. One thing I've noticed is that more people seem to participate when it's on Zoom because people don't have to come here. And we were very lucky tonight to have five people, but normally we have, you know, more than that. I'd say sometimes we have as many as 25 or 40 people. So, you know, that's another trade-off. But in, in any event, I think for the immediate future, we'll probably do it on Zoom, but if you wanted to, I shouldn't say it that way, you tell me whether you want to do Zoom or, or public and then I'll make it work, but anyway.
Yeah, I guess I would propose we do Zoom for the rest of the summer and then revisit in September. Is that okay with everyone? All right.
And getting emails every day with updates and that was the latest update that he was going to reconsider in September.
Janet?
So I, I completely agree with Andrew that the, being in, sitting together and talking and seeing people face-to-face and, you know, people, you know, at least the eyes of people talking to us and stuff has been really just qualitatively so much better for me and I think it helps us together. And so I would really go, but I also think it's amazing that so many people have participated on Zoom and so I wonder, to me, the hybrid would be critical because we, you know, people see us, we see them or sort of see them. So I would push, I, my first pick would be hybrid and then Zoom. I know in person, I, you know, I feel like you are heroes to have been here with us for three and a half hours and we don't, you know, we talk about important issues and we have, you know, people have a lot to say, so I would, I would really push hard for the hybrid model.
Yeah, I kind of envisioned like a Zoom-only screen behind you or something where, and then leave these for a project.
The NBA fans, the NBA fans are wearing like weird headphones.
That's right.
So do most of you feel that a hybrid model would be the better model? Okay, so I can pass that information on to the town manager and maybe he can help us to make that work.
Okay. Anything, oh, and the, the rest of the agenda, we already talked about Form A? None? Okay. Upcoming ZBA applications? Upcoming SPP, SPR, SUB applications?
We have two. We have the Greenfield Savings Bank ATM that's going on University Drive and then we have a parking lot that the town wants to build on Bay Road and it's to access the Sweet Alice Trail and you're probably not going to be seeing that until August 4th because July 21st, I think, is chock full of zoning public hearings, but maybe not now that you're slowing things down a bit. You'll have to relook at the schedule.
So for the planning board committee liaison reports, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission met last week and we talked about majority zoning rule change for housing projects. So zoning changes would be, you know, majority versus, is it super majority right now? So that, that is being, and that was Chris Klutchman who, who spoke before, and there was a really interesting presentation on economic impact of regional rail development in the metro Hartford-Springfield region and there's some really, that, we, we live in like in the 40th largest metro region if you're looking at Springfield and Hartford together. I wasn't aware that, you know, we have that many people, 1.6 million. Anyway, it was, it was, you know, talking about the, the rail path being, you know, shore only or, you know, getting up to Springfield and connecting Pittsfield and things like that, but I will forward her present, well, the presentation by Chris Klutchman and maybe I can get my hands on the other presentation and we can distribute that. The other boards. Can't, oop, there it is, okay. CPA?
No updates.
Okay. And Doug, with Ag Commission?
We had enough members for a quorum and elected a new chair, so we have new blood and we're onward and upward.
Great. Design review, review board, Tom?
Yeah, we reviewed and approved two of the public bike stations, one at Pomeroy and 116 and one at Southeast Street and Route 9 by the Cumberland, across the street from the Cumberland Plaza, the bank over that corner. And those were approved, there were just some site decisions about where they're located in relationship to the sidewalks that are there. And then we approved a, a sign for the West Cemetery that met the criteria and standards of the new sign system, so it wasn't too much of a, of a big deal other than some copy edits and comments, but that's what we did last week and our next meetings are going to be about Archipelago and actually a few other things now on the agenda, so.
Great. Good summary, thank you. Do you have anything with the CRC you can share?
So the CRC reviewed the same things that you were going to review tonight. They reviewed the mixed-use buildings and the apartments and the parking and that's when they said they thought they were ready for, to go to town council. And their upcoming meeting on Tuesday, which I won't be able to attend, but Rob will be there, they're going to be reviewing the latest BL zoning district. And so it hasn't really changed at all since you saw it in March, but they're going to be talking about that and talking about what should be done to make it, to move it ahead. And I don't think there was anything else on the, on the June 8th meeting, was there, Rob?
That's it.
Thank you. Reported a chair, recovered the Zoom issue, report to staff. Okay, adjournment then.